Good morning. This is public hearing for the meeting of August 9th, 2016. I'd like to take the role. Chair Shuna Valsen, here.
Here.
Commissioner Land. Commissioner Chapek.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Voss.
Good morning, Commissioners. The first two items of this public meeting are to be calendared. Item number one is LP 2586, 181 Montague Street, AKA 181 to 183 Montague Street, the People's Trust Company Building. The landmark site is Borough Brooklyn, Block 244, Lot 15 in part. Sarah Moses presenting.
Good morning. Because the two buildings to be proposed for the Commission's calendar this morning are adjacent to one another, we will briefly describe their context before talking more specifically about each building. The items are located on Montague Street in the Borough of Brooklyn and are just outside the Brooklyn Heights Historic District to the west and the Borough Hall of Skyscraper Historic District.
So where's Fred this morning? Fred? Oh, he's not here.
For nearly a century, this section of Montague Street between Clinton and Port Streets has been known as Bank Row and has historically been populated by financial institutions that sought to locate close to Borough Hall while providing services to the growing population of Brooklyn Heights. The Borough Hall Skyscraper Historic District includes several bank-related buildings on the south side of Montague Street, and the Landmark's Preservation Commission proposes to calendar the only unprotected historic banks that remain. The Brooklyn Trust Company, which is the leftmost building in each image, was the first of these grand Bank Row buildings to be designated a landmark. Montague Street, and particularly Bank Row, has historically been a connector between civic and residential, between the city and its private citizens, and between physically distinct districts. These buildings anchor this block of Montague Street and are critical to the distinctive character of Bank Row. Though they were built a quarter of a century apart, both the People's Trust and the National Title Guarantee Company buildings arose during banking booms and are stunning examples of the optimistic architecture of their times. One looking to the past to convey stability and reliability and one looking to future growth and success. The first of these proposed items, the People's Trust Company Building, is an imposing neoclassical bank building constructed for the Brooklyn-based People's Trust Company from 1903 to 1906. Designed by architects Mogry and Uffinger, it skillfully blends Greek, Roman, and Renaissance elements and exemplifies turn of the 20th century bank architecture, linking ideas of civic pride, wealth, and stability. The building is located at 181 Montague Street in Brooklyn Heights. The city of Brooklyn grew rapidly in the decades following the Civil War, creating a high demand for banks, real estate agents, and insurance companies, which sought to locate close to Brooklyn City Hall. The completion of the Brooklyn Bridge in 1883, the construction of elevated rail lines, and the expansion of the streetcar network further influenced the evolution of Brooklyn Heights. The People's Trust Company Building was erected in 1904 at the height of the transformation of Montague Street into the major commercial artery of Brooklyn Heights. As one of the first financial institutions built in this section of Brooklyn Heights, the building was critical to the development of Bank Row on Montague Street. The press was captivated by the impressive new bank. Several outlets reported that the four columns, each made from a single piece of marble, were the largest blocks of marble ever quarried, each weighing 28 tons. Resting on these four columns is a richly carved and detailed pediment, freestanding anthemia, and lines had details further adorned the cornice. The proposed landmark site is a lot in part, as shown here, and reflects the footprint of the People's Trust Company Building as constructed prior to a 1929 addition built on two off-axis rear lots. The rear addition is stylistically unrelated to the Montague Street facade of the original building. The People's Trust Company Building remains remarkably intact and continues its banking tradition, today housing a Citibank branch.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions? All right. If there are no questions, I'd like to make a motion to calendar this property.
So will I.
Okay. I don't have to say all in favor or anything, do I? That's it. Just made the motion. Okay. All right. Thanks. Okay, so this building has been calendared. Thank you, Sarah.
Item number two is LP 2587, 185 Montague Street, the National Title Guarantee Company Building. The landmark site is Borough Brooklyn, Block 244, Lot 13. Mary Ann Percival presenting.
Built in 1929-30, the National Title Guarantee Company Building at 185 Montague Street is notable for its strong massing and unusual details by one of New York City's major proponents of skyscraper design and as well as decorative work by one of the city's prominent architectural sculptors. It is also representative of Brooklyn's early 20th century financial services industry. The National Title Guarantee Company was founded in 1924 and was one of the many banks and insurance companies that established offices on Montague Street. In the first five years of business, the company expanded into Queens and Manhattan and established a bank that shared the new office at 185 Montague with the insurance firm and other tenants, mostly within the financial services sector. Success did not last, and by 1935, the firm was in liquidation. The National Title Guarantee Company Building has a slender 16-story brick shaft that rises 13 stories before the central bays extend for another three stories in a series of setbacks. The design by Corbett, Harrison, and McMurray emphasizes the building's verticality by means of projecting piers that rise from unusual stepped buttresses at the building's base and the use of a consistent vertical pattern of textured brick in the window spandrels. A central feature of the building is a pierced limestone screen designed by the noted sculptor Renee Chamblin, in which stylized elements indicative of security and industry are incorporated into the buttresses and around the building's entrances. The firm of Corbett, Harrison, and McMurray was established in 1928 and lasted until 1935. Harvey W. Corbett was known as a proponent of the skyscraper as a modern urban form and designed with various partners and associated architects, prominent buildings such as 1 Fifth Avenue and the Greenwich Village Historic District, the master building, a designated individual New York City landmark within the Riverside West End Historic District Extension 2, and the Criminal Corpse Building just up the street. At the time, the firm was designing the National Guaranteed Trust Building. Corbett and Harrison and McMurray were also selected as one of the three firms responsible for the design of Rockefeller Center. Renee Paul Chamblin was an important architectural sculptor whose work embellishes Rockefeller Center, the Panhelic Tower, Chanham Building, American Radiator Building, and the Daily News Building, all designated landmarks. Over the years, the National Title Guarantee Company Building has been remarkably well-maintained. Alterations to the base prior to the 1970s include the conversion of the bank's picture window into a retail entrance with marquee, the redesign of the recessed main entrance to be flush with the building wall, and the removal of two sections of the screen which were once attached to the emergency and fire tower exits.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, I make a motion to calendar this property.
So will I.
Okay. I just want to say one more thing, that I think that both these properties are very much deserving for our consideration. I know that the Brooklyn Heights Association is here, and Judy's here, a community group that obviously has been interested in these two buildings. And it is sort of, I think the context is really important, given that on one side you have Brooklyn Heights and then you have the skyscraper museum, skyscraper district. And these are sort of the buildings that are left out, and they really do form a critical part of the ensemble on Montague Street. So with the calendaring of these two properties, our research department will continue to do both outreach as well as research. And we'll be holding a hearing in the next several months.
Item number three is proposed for designation. It's LP 163. It's the Williamsburg Trust Company Building, also known as the Ukrainian Church in Exile Holy Trinity Cathedral. It's at 177 South Fifth Street, AKA 177 to 185 South Fifth Street. The landmark site is Borough Brooklyn, Block 2446, Lot 63. Michael Kuratzis presenting.
Commissioners, the Williamsburg Trust Company Building was previously heard at the special backlog hearing on October 8th, 2015, as Williamsburg Trust Company Building, Ukrainian Church in Exile Holy Trinity Cathedral. At that hearing, a representative of the owner, Holy Trinity Cathedral, spoke in opposition to designation. Eight people, including Councilmember Antonio Reynoso, spoke in favor of designation. The site had earlier been heard on February 8th, 1966. As shown on this map, the proposed landmark site includes the building's entire lot, the sidewalk fence in front of the east and south frontages of this lot, and all land in between the lot line and this fence, including the land underneath any features of the building that extend over or onto adjacent sidewalks. Completed in 1906, the Williamsburg Trust Company Building is a monumental neoclassical style bank building, recalling Williamsburg's industrial prosperity of the 19th and early 20th centuries and the historic role of the building's surrounding area as a commercial and financial hub serving Williamsburg, Greenpoint, and Bushwick. Designed by Helmley, Huberty, and Hudswell, major Brooklyn architects who designed some of the borough's most significant early 20th century banks and parts structures, including the Prospect Park Boathouse, it initially served as headquarters of the Williamsburg Trust Company, which enjoyed considerable financial success following its 1899 founding. It is a superlative example of the luxurious banking temples constructed in Manhattan and Brooklyn starting in the late 19th century, featuring two classical porticos with aquitaria on its two street facades, as well as a saucer dome recalling that of the Pantheon. Originally intended to stand in isolation, the building is remarkable for its four fully-developed classical facades, as well as its unusual facing material of white terracotta. The building's opulent design and prominent location at the entrance of the then-new Williamsburg Bridge drew admiration from the press, which described it as "a superb new edifice that was both extravagant and palatial." Shortly after the building's opening, the Williamsburg Trust Company was rocked by the panic of 1907 and served its last customer in 1910. Five years later, the building was acquired by the City of New York as part of a broad effort to reform the city's court system and improve Brooklyn's courthouses. And from 1916 to 1958, it served as magistrate's court for the 5th District of Brooklyn. The building's cross-shaped plan and central dome made it attractive for conversion to an Orthodox church, and in 1961, it was acquired by the Holy Ukrainian Autocephalic Orthodox Church in Exile, which renovated it to serve as its Holy Trinity Cathedral. Since then, the church has diligently and sensitively maintained the building, enabling this lavish structure to endure as one of Williamsburg's most prominent and imposing landmarks.
Thank you, Michael. Are there any questions? All right. Listen, do you want to say something?
Yes, thank you. Commissioners, as you know, you've all received the owner's materials outlining the opposition to designation based on the building's alterations, the comparative merit of the building, and the financial impact of designation. Staff has carefully reviewed this information and does not believe the paper submitted make a compelling argument on the merit of the building nor on the hardship of the church and recommends that the Williamsburg Trust be designated as a landmark.
Are there any concerns, the Commissioners? All right. I just want to also just comment that, that obviously religious institutions raise, and landmarking raise, complex issues for the Commission, but we grapple with them every day. I think we recognize that religious institutions may vary in terms of their means and their ability to maintain their property, as well as their needs for, to ensure that their programmatic mission continues. And I think the Commission has always tried to work with them in partnership, and we will do so in this particular case as well. And we have, you know, offered our services to the church in order to alleviate some of their concerns, and we'll continue to work with them. Yes.
And I just want to, I agree with that 100%, of course. And I just wanted to add to it. I think that in looking at the applicant's materials, I think that the one thing that had some substance is that we, the city could do more to improve the ability of these kind of buildings to reap the benefits of their development rights by looking again at, I mean, this is another case where looking again at, at the zoning, the air rights modifications would be a really benefit, a significant benefit to these and other property areas.
Yes, I completely agree, and obviously that's something that's the planning commission and working with us continue to look at. But I do want to note that, you know, leaving aside some of these issues, I think this building is just amazing. And when I came to New York, went across the Brooklyn Bridge for the first time, there were two buildings on either side, and one just assumed they were landmarks.
Yeah.
And it's not completely surprising that this building was calendared in 1966. So we've come a long way here, and if there are no other concerns, I'd like to move towards designation. Okay.
Surprising that these aren't not landmarks. Think of the anchor of the bridge.
I moved that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Williamsburg Trust Company Building, later 5th District Magistrates Court, later Holy Trinity Cathedral. 177-185 South Fifth Street, Borough of Brooklyn, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristic of the city, state, and nation, as set forth in the Designation Report for LP 0163 dated August 9th, 2016. I also moved that the Borough of Brooklyn tax map, Block 2446, Lot 63, be designated as a landmark site. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Williamsburg Trust Company Building is now a landmark. Yeah.
We do have hearings next week, right?
No.
No.
Okay. 2017, 85-30, 37th Avenue, in the Jackson Heights Historic District, Block 473, Lot 1, in the Borough of Queens. This is a modern style, commercial building designed by Champan and Champan and built in 1947. This is an application to replace storefront infill, install signage, and modify and create masonry openings.
Good morning, Commissioners. Abby Haraldt, Preservation Staff. This application is for exterior alterations at the northeast corner storefront, 85-30, 37th Avenue, which is located on the south side of 37th Avenue between 85th and 86th Streets in the Jackson Heights Historic District. So the application is to replace storefront infill and signage, install awning and light fixtures, and to install painted wall sign here, and to create window and door openings at the sidewall here underneath these windows on 86th Street. And the applicant is here to discuss this further.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mary Dirickson. I'm a preservation consultant for this project. So this is a 1947 modern commercial building. As Abby pointed out, what we want to do is to, let's see if this works, is to install, is to make an opening there underneath these, the little windows and a door. Here's the building in designation. You'll notice that it has a corner entrance, and that a similar corner entrance is going to be put back along with the, a new storefront, which is going to basically otherwise match These have been approved. This is the other side of the same building. It goes through the block, and that's been approved here, and it looks good. And this is across the street, across 86th, 86th Street, and that was approved. So these long brick facades have recently had new openings. In addition, we're proposing to put a sign right in that area. It's a painted sign on the wall, plus lighting on the sign. The sign will be more like the one next door and awnings. This is the plan. This is the difference in the two, this is the new entrance. That's the old entrance. Here's the proposal. So I think that it's pretty clear. This is going to be just like a latex paint. With awning, without awning. And then with awning and without awning. Section, and really storefront plan. This shows painted signs, both in Queens and just around. It's been fairly traditional in the 19th and early 20th century. So let me go back to the, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions? Yes?
The windows on the, that were already approved, are the new ones going to be, going to match those in terms of detailing?
They're not, they're going to be just a little bit different. So the, that will be back here. These are the approved, it's just a somewhat different configuration. Ours, our proposed is there's a window on these three and then a door. So it's just a different.
About materials?
Yeah, they're punched windows, painted, actually, I think it's painted metal. Might be aluminum, but within the Jackson Heights storefront rules.
Art, in the one you're showing here, it looks like the material is a silver or whitish color. I assume that matches a lot of the white on the corner. Is your intention to have it be silver, be black?
You know, I'm trying to remember that. In Jackson Heights, you can have that aluminum under the rules. The storefront next door is aluminum, the current storefront is painted. I think we're going to paint it.
Well, they're all painted. It's better what color.
Yeah. Oh, dark. Dark. Sorry.
All right. Diana, you had a question?
Yeah, a couple of, first, the first one is the painted wall sign. I can't personally think of a sign in Jackson Heights like that. I know that there are some in Queens, but I don't think in this district that you'll find a lot of painted wall signs. So what's the precedent for the district?
I haven't seen any of it. It's, yeah.
And, okay, thank you, Mary. Anyway, and, yeah, I think that this is the dark, dark painted on this side, correct?
Yes. And it's black sign.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any speakers on this item? No speakers? Yes, there's a speaker. Sorry.
Vanwell.
Oh, okay. Thanks, John. Okay. So no speakers? All right. Community, Community Board 3 recommends approval. Okay. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Right? We can close the hearing? All right. I think we want to make sure that this is consistent and that its details are consistent. So can we suggest that they work with staff to make sure that it's harmonious with the other openings and in terms of its detail, material, color? Okay. Yes?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I think that, that the new door should match the existing door in terms of its relationship with the window above. That seems like a simple thing to do, and they could do it with staff as well. And I'm, the only question I have is really the, the lighting. And the lighting is kind of stepping on the one nice detail that the building actually has, which is these kind of little precast corner things. So maybe they could work with staff to reexamine the lighting approach. Maybe a, you know, linear uplight or a downlight or something. That would be part of the sign bend.
That's good. Yes, Diana?
Yeah, I agree with Michael, and I just wanted to note, because I have been spending a lot of time looking at the low, you know, level buildings in the neighborhood, and they're very quirky and interesting. Each of them has its own kind of design of character. And it would, it's, I think, really important to preserve these little details on these small buildings, because it's what makes the district. Each of them has, is different, and that's, that's an important issue. And as I commented, you just don't see these wall signs in Jackson Heights, and it, there's really no reason for it. You've got, the whole building is identified for this, and it's going to be lighted. Signage, it doesn't need an additional sign for people to know that it's there. It's not like it's competing with 15 other things or something on this. It's, and I think it's sufficiently prominent. I'm glad they're replacing the entrance, the corner entrance, which, but I agree that with the chair that they really need to work out the details here. It's too bad, I think, that the other side isn't dark colored as far as the windows. So maybe they come back to us in the future.
Right. Because the dark one's actually better than the white. So, thank you. Okay. All right. So let's move to decision. Yes?
In the matter of, 18-2017, 85-30, 37th Avenue, Jackson Heights Historic District, a modern style commercial building designed by Champan and Champan, and both in 1947 applications to replace storefront infill, install signage, and modify and create masonry openings. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Jackson Heights Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that none of the work will alter, eliminate, or conceal any significant architectural features of the building, that the presence of masonry openings, windows, and a door set within the plain brickwork of the sidewall will be in keeping with the presence of masonry openings and infill found at side facades of buildings throughout the historic district, that the size and placement of the proposed openings centered beneath the windows above will help maintain a unified composition at this facade without altering the overall character of the building or overwhelming any significant features, that the metal and glass materials, dark painted finish, and basic composition of the proposed infill will be in keeping with such aspects of storefront infill historically found at buildings of this type, style, and age, that the black canvas awning will be typical of installations of this type throughout the historic district in terms of its material, color, slope, and placement in relation, relation to the masonry opening, that the black paint, oh, no, forget that. That, the combination. Nope. Okay. That the proposed metal sign panels will, will, and associated framing, pin-mounted letters, and light fixtures will be typical of installation of these types at buildings of this type, style, and age in terms of placement, material, size, and details, and that the cumulative amount of signage, and that the, anyway. However, I recommend that the signage on the sidewall not.
Are you saying that, that we don't want the, that's a yes or a no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's why I just skipped everything.
Yeah, that's what you just skipped over, yes.
That the stuccoed signage not be included in the design and that the staff and that the applicant work with the commission staff to incorporate profiles and dealings, details which will be in keeping with details, materials, coloring, et cetera, historically found at buildings of this type, style and age and that the, and also to relocate the lighting so that it doesn't negatively impact the building's historic features.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the second item on the agenda, it's an application for certificate of appropriateness. Sorry. In the borough of, in the borough of Brooklyn, it's docket number eighteen seven oh nine two. This is one fifty-two Henry Street located within the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a Greek Revival style row house built in eighteen thirty to thirty-nine and the application is to construct a rear yard addition and replace windows.
Good morning, Commissioners. Derek Danner, Preservation Department Staff. This property is located in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District on the east side of Henry Street between Love Lane and Clark Street. The applicant is proposing to construct a three, a three-story rear yard addition and alter windows at the Henry Street facade. The proposed rear yard addition will be visible from Pierpont Street through a gap in the street wall. The architect is here to present this application. Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Baker. I perform active architecture. I'm here to present our application, as I said, for a three-story rear extension to back of one fifty-two Henry Street and also a material change, front consignment is from blue to aluminum. Building is currently on, currently in SRO, has a very large rear yard. Initially applied to the DVD with the extension, we're totally community quality houses that went for thirty-one, six, eight months. So we have been through the process of, I think, all the interior renovations and the front facade submitted to building department and landmarks. Now we're basated here for the rear extension and at that time the client prefers aluminum windows on the front, they're lower payments. So we were considering that change, also for the application. This building is in Brooklyn Heights in the corner of Love Lane, one end in the corner of Henry Street. It was built, believe in sixteen sixty, the designation was, as I said, it's a SRO, influenced originally, seemingly obviously from the start. Other than a lot of changes on the interior, probably is the rear addition first. The left is the first, you can see it's a full, full width, three-story, right, original facade. This is an existing section of the building, it's a four-story, and a short rear extension, which is a little bit less than ten feet to match the nearest building, which is the second. It's just a study of the rear yards. It's a sort of a, in the corner of the, of the rear yards with an extension, a two half story extension next to us and then two doors down does a four-story extension that checks beyond the proposed addition. Just a, I can't imagine. And there's a disability study. It's mostly, it's hot, it's visible from Henry Street, it's not visible from Love Lane. The building is, the extension full height, so the rear point of disability is from Pierpont Street through block, which turns down on this top. This is what it looks like, Pierpont Street, this little, little red outline, the neighbor's extension, which is shut here, so it's a gray stucco addition. And ours is basically coming out this far. From, from this far back into Love Lane, you can almost see a roof and from this position, you can see a little bit of the side of the house, the top of it.
I'm sorry, can we go back to that slide for a moment? The earlier slide? In this photo, in this drawing that you have on the right-hand side, you've shown the footprints of the buildings and is there reason why that doesn't relate to your neighborhood study and the, the footprints that you've shown? It doesn't, because it seems like the building, I'm just trying to...
So this, yes, sorry, it's just a portion of it, sorry.
Right, because the adjacent, I'm just trying to understand the adjacent building towards the right, is that deeper than your building or not?
It currently is, yes.
It's deeper?
So our building is the red one, we're proposing the blue addition. And we're showing the neighbor, which already has a three-story, it's supposed to be blue.
Right, but here it seems that you're showing that it matches it, but in the, that other drawing that you just had...
Sorry, this is, right, this does not show.
Right, because here it seems that...
The picture is still, so, sorry. Right, so in our, in our proposal, our...
You're going to deep, you're, okay, you're going to match it? Okay, got it, understood. No, it's, I just needed clarification? Okay.
So here you can see our neighbor, we're trying to match it down.
And to the height, to the height, three stories?
To the height of this one.
Okay, got it.
This is our neighbor, right, the south, which is the CBS. Those are the, which are occupied, maybe they have some plans that they're, it's hard to photograph, hanging out from the side of our house and looking up here, it looks like a, even the rear yard. So that CBS wall, let's see, two sides.
So...
I'm sorry, the windows are already out?
Well, so this is, this is when we first started the project, but we had some asbestos abatement and they were supposed to be, take just the panes of blast notes, so all the patio was hot and everyone on the front here heard this noise. So the windows, the decor of, of, it's just very purposeful ground floor. Not what they're supposed to have, but yeah, so those are the visual, the visual, the front facade or the material loss. So now just to, to the front facade, existing is on the right. It was originally a stoop, which can stand a lot, which were a story that was removed. And, sorry, currently, right, tax code, yes. This is just sort of details of the, of the, of the, of all wood windows, and we're proposing it's an aluminum clad wood window. So the existing, whoops, proposed details are, we're trying to match the brick mold, which says it was a small half now. And, here we see, as we might, is, in our proposal, it is existing, but I guess it's divided by, so it will be here, someone there, goes into renovation.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes?
Back to O two, or the line. If the rear facade was made of stucco, right? It's finished. So it's, what's, is it a, is it a cement stucco?
It'd be a cement stucco, but later, it's a steel frame, like, the light age, or heavy age, but, and it says in the note, your attention, you're having a quiet, hard match, stucco with the front facade. Right, so there's, there's some existing stucco that's been painted over, so we've done a lot of, it's on the front facade, the front facade. And this is all decorated. But I think it's, it's not visible and our clients are asking to look at what is, discussion that was, they are always looking at our, starting, like, this is a small stucco.
Okay, any other questions? If I could take testimony, Judy Stein?
Judy Stanton for the Brooklyn Heights Association. Our position on the application pertaining to a proposed replacement of the historical wood windows is found in the Landmark Preservation Commission's Row House Manual quoting, "In rowhouses where complete window replacement is unavoidable, new window sashes and frames on primary facades should be designed to replicate existing sashes and frames if these are historic in configuration, operation, material, finish and details. While we can support replacing the parlor level windows with nine or six windows, we cannot support the window material type as proposed. In our view, aluminum clad windows would undermine the historical integrity and authenticity of this house and of our district as a whole. The four-story plus brick attic, brick rear facade of one fifty-two entire, Henry Street is entirely intact. In the presentation, we're given limited examples of the historical context along Henry Street for front and rear facades. The proposal calls for a three-story full width rear yard addition. Our committee does not support removal of the entire rear wall at both the basement, first and second floor levels because our committee sees this as an extension of the house rather than as an addition and while the removal of this much of the building envelope causes us pause as it relates to the building's structural integrity, we are equally concerned that all evidence of the rear building wall is completely erased with this significant intervention. The seamless expansion of the basement, first and second floor footprints results in an extension of the existing building. This is an important distinction for our committee. Removing all trace of the existing rear building wall significantly increases the size of the floor plate and allows for interior configurations that are not typical to a row house of this era. It alters the perceived scale of the historic property to the point of belying the graceful proportion it shares with other houses on this block and in this district. The two adjacent rear yard additions have smaller bulk and massing. It is our opinion that an addition can be added to one fifty-two Henry Street without the complete removal of the existing rear wall. The rear extension fabrication details in the presentation we reviewed were incomplete. Along with the stucco material that is being proposed, we would urge the applicant to reconsider the palette of window, door and wall materials by reducing the overall amount of proposed glazing on the basement, first and second floor and by considering brick for the extension as well as reducing its scale and bulk." Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. HDC applauds the return of this stoop and the parlor floor windows will, which will reinstall the correct proportions of this facade. We suggest, though, that staff look closely at the details in the stoop, ironwork and window surrounds of this proposal to make sure that once this facade is fixed, it's done absolutely correctly. We also do not support aluminum replacement windows. We believe the wooden windows where they exist are original and in Brooklyn Heights as all places, they should be done in wood. Regarding the rear, the committee thought it would make for a better design if the bulk mirrored the neighbor next door with a notch cutout and also regularized the window arrangement. There's currently a picture window, one story has transoms, another story doesn't have transoms and all of this set within a gray stucco kind of makes for a drab composition. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Any other speakers? All right, we received one letter, one email in opposition and Community Board Two waived its opportunity to comment on this, on this project. Do we have any additional questions for the owner? Do you want to respond to any comments that were made?
Like there was a comment about the addition, the interior, I think when we presented the, sort of, we showed, it's obviously difficult to add ten feet of building, you know, with other rooms on the interior. It's also difficult to add, do an extension where you're preserving the rear walls, really if it's, unless it's a separate room, you really want to open up the floor plant as much as possible. So the window configuration, there are separate floors with a different program behind the windows more match the program, those are master bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, living room, so they are somewhat regularized on the basement and on first floor, but the window ledge is different on the second, which is the master bedroom floor where there's a bathroom, where the owner wanted privacy on one side. I think the color was, we were proposing white or stucco or reddish brown.
Okay. I guess, Michael?
A question arose. Is there a sense that those windows are original, like very old windows?
Um, I, I would say they're, they're very old and very poor shape. They're mostly rotted out, they are, and you do have asbestos in the patio, which is probably not original. I don't think that asbestos used came until, you know, early in the twentieth century.
And did the staff take a look at these windows and determine that they are candidates for a replacement in terms of their condition?
Commissioners, I, I looked at the windows and they seem to be in very poor shape. I don't think that they're original to eighteen thirty, eighteen thirty-nine. They possibly were replaced at a later time.
It's a very thin meeting ground, that's one. That really does seem...
Old.
First quarter of the nineteenth century.
Mm-hmm. Okay, any other questions? All right, we can close the hearing. All right, comments?
I think I agree with the testimony about the, the need to replace, if they have to be replaced, and I, I trust the diagnosis of the staff, if they have to be replaced, that they be replaced in wood, not in aluminum or clad. I think that's very important and certainly with the, the consideration of the surround where that, that bead and quirk on the aluminum brick mold is nowhere near replicative of the one that's, that's in wood and never will be able to be replicated.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I agree as well that the windows should be in wood if they need to be replaced and I just, I think that the existing rear facade is really beautiful and, yeah, in terms of the proportions, in terms of the way it's kind of intact despite the fact that the windows have now been removed. But I don't, you know, and I don't really understand what the new design is frankly, but I don't feel as though we can ask them to retain the existing rear facade just, just because it is so beautiful. But I, I think, you know, I, I would be in support of, you know, having it extend the full ten feet, the full height, you know, and not just up to the third floor if they were willing to kind of keep that quiet facade.
So the, the, keep it in brick and with...
Yeah, but I mean, I don't know that we have the...
Yes, Michael?
I'm, I'm personally not opposed to the aluminum clad windows. I, I think that the brick mold should be wood though. I think that, that brick mold that was shown is pretty, pretty poor. We, I, I recall, I think we have approved aluminum clad wood windows in similar situations. I know it's...
The chairs?
I, I think we have.
Have we approved aluminum clad brick mold windows?
Aluminum clad wood window with a wood brick mold? Have we? Well, I don't know about with the wood brick mold or not, but I, I, I do recall, I think, I recall us approving aluminum clad wood windows in conditions where not, you know, not multifamily, and multifamily, we do it all the time, but for townhouses, I think, I think we have. No?
We recall voting against it.
That's fine.
Should you respond to that?
I'm sorry, I'm still not, so, I'm still not understanding what, what the question is, so it's... Approve, have we approved... Approve, have we approved aluminum-clad wood windows in single-family townhouse replacements?
Okay, we have. The commission, it's, of course, it comes to the commission, and for the majority, the majority of the cases, I'd say we have approved it, yeah.
Although I do think that if the window, I mean, the windows, in the photos, don't look like they're unsalvageable, and they do look rather old. So I guess I'd be okay with replacing the windows if, and certainly the modification on the parlor floor is fantastic, and we should support it. But I think if the upper floor windows can be restored, it would be best, and I just would ask the staff to take a second look at that, especially if Michael's intuition is, is that they are rather, rather old. In terms of the back facade, now, I'm okay with the volume and the scale of it. It's well within the norms that we've approved in the past. I think that what bothers me about it is the, the design. I think that we give rear facades an awful lot of leeway, but it reminds me of one we looked at last week where the rear facade just is coming out of left field and has no relationship at all to either what's going on in, you know, in the rest of the rear yard or with the building itself. I just think that the applicant could put a little bit more effort on designing from the outside in as well as from the inside out and make it something that was not aggressively fighting its own building.
Yes, Jamie?
Yeah, I would like to echo both Commissioner Barron and Commissioner Goldblum's comments about the rear. I applaud the applicant's efforts to, to restore the entrance on the front facade and even with the windows, trying to make sure that they work with the original history of the building. I agree that the back as it was, was really lovely, and I don't have a problem with the volume. I, I do feel like it's almost, it's almost like, you know, we're finishing up at the end without giving it as much thought as we could, and it speaks more to the addition next door, which is very nondescript than to the character of the building and the neighborhood itself. So I would also say it would be wonderful if it were brick and if, you know, the windows were looked at again on the extension, just to see how it could, once the entire project, the building is packaged front and back, you know, it's really more like the gem that it was.
Okay, other comments? All right, I just wanted to also sort of echo some of what is said today. I think that the work that they're doing at the front of the building is, is great, and I, I think I'm okay also with the change in material. I think they should work with staff to make sure that they actually have to replace it and work with staff to get the details right if it's a change in material. I think the volume at the back is also fine, but I do, you know, I hear the comments. We have given a lot of flexibility, but I think that in this particular case, it just seems that if you just look at the rear, there just, even like simple moves could make it, just regularize the treatment, there's, you know, have some brick on the sides and sort of carry them through. This doesn't seem to relate to the proportions at the top floor. So it seems like that a simple move, which is the material, they're looking at stucco. I don't think they seem to have any strong feelings about stucco. They're like, oh, it could be, but maybe it should be in, in brick, and that will at least recall what it was originally, and, and perhaps they could work with staff to sort of regularize the windows, or, I mean, do you really want
Is that too dramatic a change to say? I mean, it's going to be something completely different when it comes back. They may have to come back to us, I think.
Right, I mean
And we're changing, changing the material, we're changing the shape, we're changing the arrangement of the windows.
I don't know, I mean, I think, yes.
Well, I was going to say, we could, if you, if you agree, we could regularize the windows with a, you know, perhaps there's a detail at that small window, just make it more rectilinear in form, and then there's that spandrel between the floors, and then perhaps on the, on the right, there's that, the pier that comes down, perhaps we could work with them to, to regularize those features.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. The first and second floor, the windows, you know, the proportions seem
I think we should have it back.
At the front, the rear?
Also saying it doesn't align with the upper floors and, you know, so that's another piece of the, the window redesign, so to speak.
I think it's, I think, I'm with John on this one. I think, I think it is a bit, much of a stretch to let it, to dump this on staff. I think that it'd be good to have it back.
Okay, I mean, we can ask them to come back. I think it's sometimes, you know, burdensome for, you know, individual property owner to come back for these kind of things. I think, I mean, I, I think the solutions are, that Jared suggested, make a lot of sense, is really sort of aligning them to the windows above, but, you know, if the commission feels strongly that they should come back, then we can ask them to do that.
I think we're putting a big burden on staff if we don't ask them to come back.
I'm not sure the staff thinks that way, but that's fine. We can, we'll ask them to come back.
Okay. Okay, the next item then is on the agenda is item number three. It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Brooklyn, docket number 165546. This is 220 Berkeley Place, located within the Park Slope Historic District. This is an apartment building designed by Cavey and Caveret, and built in 1955. The application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of windows.
This is 220 Berkeley Place, located on Berkeley Place between Seventh and Eighth Avenues in the Park Slope Historic District. Application before you today is to establish a master plan for window replacement. This is a mid-rise apartment building constructed in 1955. On the left is a photograph of the window condition at time of designation. You'll note it was a double-hung window, three over three with horizontal muntens. On the right are the existing conditions at the building. The windows shown here were replaced building-wide without LPC permits and replaced with aluminum one-over-one double-hung windows. The applicants are here today to propose a master plan, which would allow for building-wide replacement and subsequent replacement of the existing windows with a similar one-over-one double-hung aluminum window. The probes that were conducted showed the original finish and profiles of the muntens and brick molds, which are, they are proposing to replicate in extruded aluminum, and the applicant is here to walk you through it and answer any questions.
Yeah, if you can speak a little louder because of the air conditioning. My name is Ted Klingensmith. We're proposing to replace the windows during the probes. As Edith said, we uncovered a slight profile in the trim around the window. We're going to leave the existing wood trim in place and clad it. This is show of elevations. We're proposing to replace all of the windows except for, you know, any rated windows. We're just doing the unrated windows at this point. The existing windows that, the existing replacement windows that were done without permission have a very bulky square profile, we'll be removing that, then cladding close to the existing wood profile that's underneath. And we will be using the ivory color to, you know, also match the historic color. The horizontal muntens, we're proposing to omit. No one in the building ever remembers them being there. They don't want them, and the cost is, they cost about half as much as a brick. So the building would respectfully request and have permission to move forward with this.
Okay, any questions? All right. There's one speaker on this item, Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. The historic rendering of this building provides a compelling argument for the original window configuration, highly unusual with horizontal muntens. These windows are the substantial difference between a plain building and one with some design aesthetic. These small divisions in the glass repeated many times over the facade lend an appearance of horizontality and help reveal the building's era. HDC understands that many windows have been replaced and that the building will fare better with a consistent window type. That said, we hope LPC could determine a creative solution to introduce this pattern again, as the rest of the building is devoid of any ornament. Thank you.
Are there any of the speakers on this item? No other speakers. Community Board Six waives their review. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing. All right, comments? Yes.
In the history of, of projects that we've reviewed for master plans, I don't think, I can't think of one that had a, had a higher reason, this is, for, for putting back the original muntens. I mean, this one, that's all the building had, on the other hand. You know, I mean, you can see from the rendering that this, this is the only decoration or period element that this poor little building ever had, was its, its window mullions and maybe those teensy weensy little precast corners at, at the bathroom windows. That said, I think that the, the building, in its banality and plainness, looks completely appropriate with the one-over-one windows, so I'm, I'm a little bit conflicted. I certainly would be okay with having all the, the non-principal facade windows to be double-hung, but I'm, I'm a little bit torn about the front facade.
I understand what you're saying and the fact that, you know, it's a, it's a pretty plain building, and this is probably the only thing that gave it some little more distinction. But, you know, the Park Slope Historic District was primarily a district for row houses, and apartment buildings were really kind of the anomaly, and I think from that perspective...
There's some cute apartment buildings in, you know, in Park Slope.
But if, if you read the report, it really is about the, the row houses, and, you know, some of the apartment buildings were not included, but this is within the district, clearly. It's, you know, in, on the narrow street. So, you know, I, I would be okay with a master plan, given its sort of general context. We could ask, I don't know, but other commissioners, I would, I would support the master plan. Others? Yes, okay.
I got the same comment pretty much as Michael did, but again, we would prefer the three-over-three, but we understand there are none left, so I don't think anybody's ever seen them since it was designated, so I can agree to having the one-over-one. But yes, we would prefer the three-over-three.
We're okay with that? Okay, someone will move to decision. John?
Docket number 165546, 220 Berkeley Place in the Park Slope Historic District. The application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of windows. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the proposed window master plan will not result in the loss of significant architectural fabric, as all of the original windows have already been replaced, that the proposed one-over-one double-hung aluminum windows will match the operation of the historic wood windows, that the proposed baked-on-beige enameled finish will match the finish of the historic wood windows, that the proposed extruded aluminum panning will recall the profile of the historic wood brick mold and mullions, that the proposed windows will match the one-over-one configuration of the existing windows, helping to maintain a uniform fenestration pattern, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural character of the building or the Park Slope Historic District.
Second?
Yeah.
All in paper? Any opposed? Because applications are paid. Sorry about that.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item, item four on the agenda is an, an application for a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Brooklyn, docket number 186587. This is 682 10th Street, located within the Park Slope Historic District. This is a neo-grec-style row house designed by J.D. Reynolds and built in 1888. The application is to construct a rear yard addition.
My name is Samantha Cesarene, Preservation Staff. This is an application for work at 682 10th Street, located between Eighth Avenue and Prospect Park West. Subsequent to this application, a permit was issued for work at this address to remove a modern one-story addition at the rear facade. Upon commencement of the work, the rear facade was found to be structurally unsound and required a more extensive scope of work than the modest exterior alterations proven in the block. This is an application to construct a one-story rear yard addition, which, as proposed, extends slightly farther into the rear yards than the majority of additions in the block, thus requiring a public hearing to review the work.
Good morning, I'm Dan Kaplan, owner of Faribert Architects. My clients here are the owners of 682 10th Street, Dan and Sue Bronson, who have lived there for 35 years. Their area of Park Slope, now considered South Slope, was landmarked in 1973. Their house is located here on the block. And I can't see that. So right there. It's hooked ended by two additions off the rear of buildings to the west and east of their house. Those in medenta are two-story additions. All the others, in red, are one-story additions. Across the rear yard are a series of two-story additions, followed down the block by different-sized one-story additions. So if this is their house, they're entirely surrounded by different-sized additions. The one we proposed goes out by a total of 15 feet, and the entire addition will be 15 by the full property line, property line width of 17 foot 10, required by zoning, and the addition will be nine and a half feet tall.
This is a one-story?
One-story addition, correct. It's right here in this aerial photo, and on the landmarked district plan, it's right there. And you can see it's not visible from any street, being right there, all of the streets are closed in. Being right there, all of the streets are closed in. These are views of the rear yards across on Eleventh Street from their rear windows. These are all different additions. It's very hard to photograph them, but they stick out to different degrees, all surrounding them. This is looking down their block to the east. That's the two-story addition that sticks way further out than they do. And then there are different-sized additions, shit, whatever you want to call them. This is from above, that one. This is looking up their street to the east, that a two-story addition. I don't know exactly what happens after, but it's obviously fairly modern. And that's this addition from above. We experienced, so when I was called in to do a renovation for them, we were going to do a renovation of the garden-level apartment and the parlor floor. When we started doing probes from the inside of the existing condition, they had a major flood, a pipe burst on two stories up, which is why they called me to start doing the work. As we started taking apart walls and ceilings to see what needed to be replaced from the damage, we found the rear wall to be in very poor condition. Somebody previous to them had done alterations, and we brought in our engineer and found it to be structurally unstable. So the Bronsons came back to us, the engineer and I decided we have to put in a reinforcing beam cross. And then we started talking about different possibilities, and they decided to ask for an addition in order to accommodate their daughter on the ground level. And that addition would allow us to do an extra bedroom, so that their whole family could stay in there. This shows what the addition looks like here. We need clear-story windows to get light into the second bedroom inside. These are renderings of what the addition would look like. It's planned in gray stucco, black clad, glowy glass, insulated windows, black painted guardrail, copper gutter and downspout. We have brick pavers on the roof. We're going to put planters in later. And then these are the clear-story windows. And one other piece of this is that we need to raise the sill of that window in order to accommodate the light and air requirements into the middle bedroom below. Go ahead.
All right, any questions? Any questions? Are there any speakers on the side? Okay, no speakers.
We had a community board hearing. We were approved, and neighbors came actually to testify on their behalf. We're approving with no change.
All right, great. If there are no other questions, we can close the hearing.
Some.
Right. Any concerns about this? It seems very modest.
Yeah, I, I wanted to express my appreciation for the fact that they could have done so much, tried to do so much more. And it's a modest footprint, it's a modest height, it's contextual. I have no problems.
Okay, great. Any other comments? All right.
Just love the, the light into the bedroom. I think that's a nice touch.
Creative as well. Adi?
Yes. In the matter of six-eighty-two-tenth Street in the Park Slope Historic District, it's a Neogrec-style row house designed by J.D. Reynolds and built in eighteen eighty-eight, and the application is to construct a rear yard addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details contribute to the architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District, and I recommend approval, finding that no significant architectural features at the rear facade will be altered or eliminated by the proposed work. That the proposed work will not be visible from a public thoroughfare. That the proposed rear yard addition will be in keeping with the depth of other rear yard additions on the block. That the proposed addition will not rise to the full height of the building and will not be taller than the predominant height of existing additions or enlargements in the block. That the gray stucco finish and metal and glass fenestration at the addition will be in keeping with the character of a row house and additions found in the Historic District, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the district.
Second?
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved. I just want the Commission to also welcome Samantha Cesarelli. This is her first presentation, so... Welcome. And this application is approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is item five. It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, docket number eighteen five-three-one-eight. This is fourteen St. Luke's Place, located within the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a row house built in eighteen fifty-two to fifty-three, and the application is to replace windows.
Edith Bellings has in Preservation Staff. This is fourteen St. Luke's Place in the Greenwich Village Historic District, between Seventh Avenue and Hudson The application for you today is for window replacement at the St. Luke's Street facade. The Commissioners will note that these, this was the building at the time that the original application was filed. A staff-level permit was issued at that time for in-kind window replacement of the multi-light double-hung windows. The proposal for you today is to install casement windows at all floors, featuring fixed transoms at the parlor and upper floors. This proposal does not meet rules for staff-level approval because of the change in operation from the existing windows. And the architect is here to discuss this proposal and answer any further questions.
I'm Alan Barless of Barless Willock Architects. It's nice to be in front of you again, Commissioners, Staff, Chairs. We are looking at fourteen St. Luke's, and as Edith described, it's a window replacement proposal. We are in the midst of working on a passive house renovation to this townhome on one of the nicest blocks in town, as we all know. The building located here on St. Luke's, number fourteen, toward the east end of the straight part of the block, across from James Walker Park. This is the building here on the left in a, in a recent photo, in the tax photo and the historical photo. And, you know, we think of this as kind of the, the prow of the Greenwich Village Original District, as you have, as it obviously has great prominence and its visibility, but also being the first kind of part of that district that you see as you're heading north. And so we're very excited to be working on it and maintaining the character that we found on the block. We did a pretty exhaustive study of this much-studied block, the various window types and operations and aesthetics and dimensions and all of that, which I have an appendix at the end of your report that explains what we found. And as you could see, you know, it's kind of wonderfully known for just the right amount of variety within what generally appears to be mostly cohesive kind of patterning. And incredibly well-reserved, obviously. The study of different, the different townhouses, and then starting to look at each floor. What's interesting on this block, as you've heard before, is, is that we have something of a, a double-hung that is simulating a French casement at that time, although there might have been some casements installed at that time. Most of the windows originally were, were these double-hungs that were simulating a French casement. And this, you know, made it on the cover of Lockwood's Bricks and Brownstone. We're actually just fairly on the cover over here in the, in the end. And Lockwood talks about the reason for, for that, that type of window, that, that this, you know, compromise between construction practicality and architectural authenticity. Some Gothic Revival and many Italianate-style row houses of eighteen fifties achieved the appearance of casement windows by double-hung windows with thick jams, which he's talking about the central meeting cell, and thin horizontal mutton bars. So there is a precedent, and then obviously many of the windows in, in recent time have been turned into casement windows. So the study of the parlor windows and the upper windows, where again, there is variety, there are different types of operation on the block, but again, a kind of overall consistency. Same with the garden level, though there's a number of occlusions behind bars and plantings. Again, a decent wide variety, but overall sense of consistency. So here's our proposal, replacing the windows with wood, black instead, because that's the predominant color on the block, and replacing all the windows around the entire building with, with these new black wood windows.
Okay.
And then we have details showing that we've worked hard to try to make it as close as possible to the original. We got fairly close, I think, with, after studying anything that was available to us for recreating that, those dimensions, and we're actually doing a little bit better than some of the other more recent additions on the block of, of kind of narrow dimensions and simulation of what was there before. Upper windows, details, basement, a small protrusion with the fixed transom above.
Thank you, Alan. Are there any questions? We have one speaker, Kelly Carroll. Kelly, you don't have... Okay. Are there any other speakers on the side? All right. Community Board Two recommends denial of these windows. Do we, I know. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing? I think these windows are totally appropriate. Do we have any concerns about them?
No, no.
Okay.
That's what we're directing. The stylistic group wants to make windows look like casement windows, because casement windows were such a pain in the butt to make. You know, this is great.
I think it's great, too. And I recently walked there, and casement windows are fabulous, so I think, even if it wasn't the historic condition, it's actually a very nice window. Okay, Diana?
In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, eighteen fifty-three, fifty-three eighteen, fourteen St. Luke's Place, Greenwich Village Historic District. Application is to replace windows. I recommend, I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the documented presence of historic French casement windows at other buildings in the row supports the proposed change in operation at windows throughout the St. Luke's Place facade. That the historic double-hung windows featuring wide beaded center mullions were designed to simulate French casement windows, and therefore the proposed change in operation will be minimally perceptible and will maintain this historic detail. That the proposed sashes and frame will closely match the historic casement windows at other buildings in the row in terms of materials, finish, details, profiles, and dimensions. That the change in operation at the lower sash will only be perceptible when the window is open, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the Greenwich Village Historic District.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, docket number eighteen seven-seven-nine-nine. This is one forty-five Spring Street, located within the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a store and loft building designed by Frank Ward and built in nineteen-ten. The application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of painted wall signs.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Charlotte Brown, Preservation Staff. The application for you is one forty-five Spring Street, which is located in East River and Marston Way of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. The application is for a master plan for a painted wall sign on the east elevation, set back two feet from the front facade. The painted signage will not cover more than twenty percent of the exposed wall area and consists of ten-foot-wide and fourteen-foot-high painted sign. The background will be a simple color, and the image will be either photorealistic or graphic. And Commissioners should note that there was a painted sign on this elevation historically as shown in these photos. Stuart Beckman, a Slater member, is here to discuss the proposal.
Good afternoon. I'm Stuart Beckman, representing Angel Media. Today is Albert Beta from Angel Media. And this is our third and final application for Soho, and we appreciate your support of the prior two applications. So this is a, let me just go back to the term of proposal here. So this is what we're proposing. It's one hundred forty square foot sign to be painted on the east elevation, facing east on Spring Street. And the sign is in form, as you saw, in this, grandfathered sign, to this location presently. And it's seen as a very small, significant wall. And I just would like to directly address the two great areas that were identified as fine, that do stand relevant. One is that we're on a major thoroughfare, Spring Street. Second, that we are, there's history of signage on this wall, as always, like the photo that was shown, and showing itself as a handout, certainly. At the bottom of the sign, actually the lines, the bottom of the window. We've got here is a map on Spring Street. It is created from the custom uses of the block, but also locations of historic signs that are identified through research, historic photos. As you can see, there's a tremendous, very modest street of painted wall signs. Here they are on the map, and there's the photos. This is a historic photo to the right, and I can pull the photo, and using research. And that's basically it. We can go through some of the previously approved applications. This is again, this is, you know, marked off on the wall, seeing the city. And the Community Board unanimously recommended approving the announcement, so there's no concern about proximity of the sign to the roof. We've approved the photos and representations, as you can see, and in fact, I believe there's a significant existence of the roof, so it's probably the place. I don't think I need to go through, or not through, previous sort of terms of areas. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Beckman? Any questions? All right. Any speakers on the side? No speakers. Community Board Two does indeed recommend approval. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Beckman? All right, we can close the hearing. All right, comments?
It seems appropriate. Here's a lot that had a lot of scrutiny.
Do any of the Commissioners have concerns about the location of the sign being too close to the edge, or are you fine with it? I think they've kept two feet. Normally we've, what if, normally we've asked for five feet, is to, so that there is some masonry, is...
They make one-twenty prints for that, for the responsibilities to be, and also three-ninety-three western, so there's some practice.
All right, it seems that we've allowed two feet in the past.
Yeah, but I do, in this instance, I do agree with the staff. I think that, given the proportion, it would be nice if the applicant can pull back. I think, I think it's too slim, and it's, because it's still very visible, even if you pull back to five feet, I think, in this instance.
Okay.
And the matter of 145 Spring Street, Soho Cast Iron District. Application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of painted wall signs. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the historic--
I'm sorry, it's just--
No modifications.
Just before approval, I apologize.
Just approval. I recommend approval, finding that the historic precedent exists for painted signs on the sidewall, as evidenced by the ghost of painted wall signs shown on historic photographs, and that the work will be in keeping with the commercial character of the building and the historic district, that the sign will be located at an undeveloped secondary elevation and will be pulled back from the front of the building and will not detract from the architectural or historic character of the neoclassic style of the loft building, that the size of the sign will not cover more than 20% of the exposed wall area and is modestly scaled on the wall and therefore would not overwhelm the facade, that the limited color palette is consistent with previously approved signage master plans and will give images a graphic quality that recalls the images found in historic painted wall signs, and that the proposed wall sign, the sign will have a painted border with a simple color palette and will not call undue attention to itself or detract from the character of the streetscape. And that the proposal is approved for a term of ten years.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Application's approved. Okay, Commissioners, the next item is item seven on the agenda.
It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness Borough of Manhattan, docket number 187569. This is 442 West 22nd Street, located within the Chelsea Historic District. This is a house built in 1846-47 and later altered. The application is to modify the front facade, construct rear and rooftop additions, and perform excavation.
Morning, Commissioner Chau, representing the staff. 442 West 22nd Street is located off the south side of West 22nd, Main, Ninth and Tenth Avenues within the Chelsea Historic District. The application is to meet for alterations at this front facade, construction of rooftop addition, rear addition, and more excavation. Mary Dyrus, the preservation consultant for this project. This building was built in 1846-7. It was altered in the later 19th century. We'll see some historic photos of it. And it was stripped before 1940. The window openings remained smaller, the ornament was stripped, the stoop was removed. There are actually, you can't see it in the photos, but when you go in there, the window openings exist. So we're basically proposing to restore the window openings. It was turned into a rooming house around that time. If you look at the group, this is 442. 440 was built 10 years earlier, but for the same owner, and then that was altered in the later 19th century. They have a similar history. The rear of the building also had the same kind of alterations. The windows remained smaller, this chimney was added. There was an addition, and any ornament was stripped. There was an addition on the side that was pretty big, that looks to me as if maybe it fell down. All of the, the two buildings on either side have additions that are, that are pretty substantial. Here they are. So this is 440. Here's the building in various periods. This is the building in like the 1920s. It had been somewhat Italianated at that time, and that's not its original re-proviable condition. And here it is by the time in 1940 at a designation. The building was painted, and they painted on mortar lines to similar joints. So when you look at it at a glance, at these part photos, it looks as if it was a complete new facade, but it isn't. Is there anyone else who wants to say? This map shows the existence of an addition in the 19th and 20th centuries. This map shows that there are a lot of additions on the block as well as rooftop additions. It's not a pristine block at all. And, thanks.
Hi, I'm Little Soap, Soap Design Group. I'm very happy to be presenting this house to you today. I think it has a lot of interesting things going forward, and we're very happy to be trying to renovate this house and certainly the front facade back to its earlier time. You can see that this is the current building section. Again, you can see, as Mary had pointed out, the outline of 440 next door, which extends considerably farther, and often in full life as well. This, I think, is about where that addition was placed earlier, but again, it could have been felt out. Here are the two front facade proposals compared existing to proposed. We're bringing in, again, as Mary mentioned, we're going to restore back to the original window openings, windows, and we're going to rebuild the stoop and rebuild the entrance back to the re-proviable style. And that we're proposing is-- Now, Mary, talk about some of these historical details.
We decided to go back to the transitional re-proviable period. Their re-proviable is the most common style in Chelsea, and it was one of the major instances that it was designated. This is a late 1940s building, so we're going for the re-proviable style with a modest bracketed cornice, which was typical of the buildings of that period. These are some of our examples. There are a zillion of them in Chelsea, and you'll see more on the later sheet, but we're going for that style, and we're working hard to get that right.
Some of the details that supports on the probation proposals are showing you.
Oh, here's the-- Here are the examples, just some examples of these late, except for on late 1940s, the re-proviable, transitional re-proviable buildings on the district.
So here you'll see the 3D example metrics of the front facade. I think this is pretty straightforward as far as the front facade goes and what we're proposing to do. The main difference here is that both penthouses are showing on top. You guys have some other photographs of surrounding buildings inside the dorm. You can see that there are already maybe examples of additions that were placed, and there's all these penthouses. Here's the roof plan. So you can see where the penthouse, proposed penthouses, here, set back. Rear facade, disposal, again, coming back to original facade openings. I'm sorry. In the back, we are proposing larger window openings for terraced areas, and then also the penthouse up on top. And here's the 3D drawing again. Since we're flanked by these two other buildings that also have very large additions that drag out quite a bit, especially 440 where there is an actual historical relationship with Philistine, or former same property owner at one point, we think there are certainly some similarities between these two, 440 and 442, and they're all of the same methods applied to it. Now here's the new proposed section, so the red dash line shows the same building section. So this is the portion that we are adding here on top here. We're still within the same, we're still smaller than the extension on 440, which actually extends a little bit further out to the south, and the most solid on the top. Some typical materials. Fifty-four lans, the whole four lans. Neither of the mockup photographs. So the mockup was built, where the front facade, the mockup was actually, we were originally looking at it, judging before, and based on our review with staff, we actually pushed it back a few more feet, so now what we're proposing is from this wall actually three feet back. The mockup was not modified yet, but the rendering still reflects pushing it back three feet further to the south than what the mockup photographs show. So, oh, I'm sorry, and it was also, we also shortened the height of the mockup, the penthouse design as well.
What was the height before?
Sorry, what was the height before and what is it now?
John. Fifty-one foot and a half.
Foot and a half? Okay.
So this height--
Yeah.
--is down by a foot and a half--
And set back.
--and the mechanical penthouse was pushed back much further to the east, so it would reduce any more further visibility from this angle, which is obviously the most apparent viewpoint from this.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Diana?
The rendering is accurate, showing the three feet back--
Okay.
--and shorter, and then the mechanical penthouse first over there. And that shows the mockup with a degree of signature, just three feet further forward.
Diana?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if, if the penthouse couldn't be pushed back still further, so it's not quite visible. You've got, have to align more with the existing story right below it, but--
Well, we're hoping that--
That you don't have to. Okay, thank you.
I'm being honest, obviously, I'm speaking on behalf of my client, who would like to try and maximize that, and just like to consider the amount that it's going to the front facade to try and bring that back as well. So we're trying to see what we can do to work with the current position.
The other thing is you could maybe angle the, the front of the penthouse a little bit, you know?
Angle this front face?
I was thinking a little bit, yeah, so that, anyway.
Or studio.
A thought, okay. Let's go to--
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Are there any speakers on the side? Yes, there is in fact, Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. HTC is thrilled that this marred facade will be restored to its historic appearance. Projects like this are proof that people want to live in historic homes and that they are worth restoring back to their original splendor. In terms of the new rear that will be added, HTC consistently suggests leaving the top punched window openings intact on the top, on the highest story. On the roof, the elevator bulkhead and HVAC is extremely visible because of the situation of the two-story row house next door. In the mockups, the bulk of number 442 seems to actually rest on top of its neighbor. It's unclear why a three-story house needs an elevator, as, an elevator for a rooftop literally seems over the top and unnecessary. HTC strongly suggests preserving the sightlines from 22nd Street over this row of different houses and eliminating any visible bulk, especially since so much square footage is being proposed for the rear. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right, Community Board Four recommends conditional approval, and their conditions include modifying the penthouse bulkhead so it's not as visible from the street, either it should be made smaller or pushed back by about 15 feet, that the exterior walls concerts on the south elevation should be down-facing cone lights, I think that's about lighting, and that the new stoop should be used for storage of garbage containers.
I just want to mention quickly in response to the community board testimony that what we showed them was actually the rendering, we showed them a version of the rendering which was showing the front facade at that extended portion. So they have not seen this version, which is now since been moved three feet back.
Right, although they were recommending 15 feet.
Oh, 15.
That's what they were recommending.
It was pulled back 15.
All right, it wasn't pulled back 15, okay. Any other questions? All right, we can close the hearing. All right. It seems like, I mean, the work that they're doing at the front of the building is great, very positive, and it seems to me the bulk, you know, at the back, the enlargements, I think in general seems okay. It seems that the rooftop penthouse perhaps could be made less visible, and just looking at the plans, they definitely have space to push the whole piece back by, I think, another five feet, so they could do that, and I'm happy that they've reduced the height of it as well. I don't know if it'll ultimately eliminate visibility completely, but I think it will be much less visible and be kind of minimally visible. Yeah.
I agree, and I think that if you look at the section on 2026, you see that there's a 10-foot floor-to-floor in that top floor. It could probably be brought down a little bit. I think that Diana's idea about maybe slanting the front in combination with putting it back and, and lowering the height would probably drastically minimize visibility. That said, I don't think this, personally, I don't find this particularly offensive or problematic. I would just ask the staff to look at the design of those headers on the front facade, since this is somewhat of a speculative reconstruction or reimagining of the front facade, not based on the historic precedent for this particular house. Those headers just looked a little bit skimpy or kind of peculiar to me. Just ask the staff to look at it.
Other comments? Yes?
What are you referring to as the headers?
The, I'm sorry, the--
The brackets?
The lintels over the front facade windows, they look skinny.
The issue I have is, I think it's an almost great restoration of the front facade. I think the cornice is nowhere. It's not a Greek revival cornice, and it's not an Italianate cornice. I think they need to work with staff and have staff guide them in the correct direction for an actual Greek revival cornice.
Okay. So, any other comments? All right, so can we suggest that they work with staff on the details of the cornice, and that they push the building back by five feet because they still can capture it, because you'll still--
you see that there's a 10-foot floor-to-floor in that top floor. It could probably be brought down a little bit. I think that Diana's idea about maybe slanting the front in combination with putting it back and lowering the height would probably drastically minimize visibility. That said, I don't think this, personally, I don't find this particularly offensive or problematic. I would just ask the staff to look at the design of those headers on the front facade, since this is somewhat of a speculative reconstruction or reimagining of the front facade, not based on the historic precedent for this particular house. Those headers just looked a little bit skimpy or kind of peculiar to me. Just ask the staff to look at it.
Other comments? Yes?
What are you referring to as the headers?
The, I'm sorry, the.
The brackets?
The lintels over the front facade windows, they look skinny.
The issue I have is, I think it's an almost great restoration of the front facade. I think the cornice is nowhere. It's not a Greek revival cornice, and it's not an Italianate cornice. I think they need to work with staff and have staff guide them in the correct direction for an actual Greek revival cornice.
Okay. So, any other comments? All right, so can we suggest that they work with staff on the details of the cornice? And that they push the building back by five feet because they still can capture it? Because you'll still have space, we'll have like a terrace piece at the rear wall? And to work with staff to minimize the.
Visibility.
Yeah, the height?
Height and visibility.
Then the height can come down by at least, you know, probably nine, nine and a half feet, nine feet, right? Okay.
Got it.
The lint, that's the.
Have the staff look at it with the, with the design of the, well, I'll just say generally the design and details of all the front facade in terms of its appropriateness to the, okay.
Okay.
Regarding 442 West 22nd Street in the Chelsea Historic District, the application is to modify the front facade, construct rear yard rooftop additions, and perform excavation. I note that the building has been highly altered, but the scale and materials of the building are among the features which do contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Chelsea Historic District. I further note that the approximately 1928 photo shows that the building had been altered sometime late in the 19th century with heavy Italianate lintels and sills and a bracketed Italianate-style cornice. I recommend the approval with modifications, finding that the restoration work at the front facade will not result in the removal of significant historic fabric that may have been added over time, which is evidence of the history and development of the building. That while Italianate details documented in historic photo are not being restored, the proposed Greek revival style entrance surround window lintels, sills, multi-light double hung windows, window configuration will be in keeping with the Greek revival style buildings found elsewhere on West 22nd Street and within the Historic District. That while there is no physical or photographic evidence documenting the Greek revival style at this building, it will be consistent with the age of the building and other buildings on the block. That the construction of a full-height rear yard addition will not eliminate any significant architectural features of the rear facade. That the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare. That the building is not part of a row. And that new addition, that the new addition will not disrupt a consistent row of rear facades. That the existing rear facade is set back from the rear facade at 440 West 22nd. And the deep rear yard extension at 444 West 22nd Street. And that the new addition will continue to be set back from 440 West 22nd Street and will only slightly extend beyond the extension at 444 West 22nd Street. Therefore, a full-height, full-width addition would not overwhelm these buildings or the central green space. That the expansion of the front and side parapets will not detract from any significant architectural features of the burlinger streetscape. That the proposed excavation work will provide for additional clearance in the cellar floor and will occur entirely within the footprint of the existing building and proposed rear yard addition. And that the excavation underpinning will be done in compliance with Building Department regulations under the supervision of a licensed professional engineer or registered architect to protect the building's facades and the adjacent buildings. I further recommend that the applicant work with staff to refine the details of the cornice and window lintels. And that the applicant reduce the height and increase the setback and otherwise work with staff to modify the penthouse so that it is significantly less visible.
All in favor? Any opposed? So application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda, this item nine is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, DUC number 187574. This is 205th Avenue located within the Ladies Mile Historic District. This is a neo-renaissance-style store and office building designed by Maniki and Frank and built in 1908-09. The application is to install sidewalk planters.
Good morning Commissioners, Kate Forrest Preservation Staff. The application is for 205th Avenue, a neo-renaissance-style store and office building located on the western side of the avenue spanning from West 24th Street to West 23rd Street, across from Madison Square Park in the Ladies Mile Historic District. The proposal is to install six planters on the sidewalk adjacent to the Fifth Avenue facade, matching the planters in the nearby pedestrian spaces in terms of material dimensions, finish, and spacing. The applicant is here to discuss the proposal.
Thank you, Kate. Pat Sackler, Beacon Space Partners. This is a simple proposal for six planters. From Fifth Avenue side, I'm here with Sarah Fay from Illinois. Holding that there are specific questions about the installations or the operations of the plantings. We're happy to talk about those. The building on the corner of 23rd and Fifth Avenue wraps around the 24th Street. Just an existing plan in our orientation. This is Fifth Avenue here, 23rd and 24th Street. The installation is along Fifth Avenue side. A detailed plan and existing plan, proposed plans here. This is a particularly wide sidewalk, 31 feet wide. The installation will allow for 25 feet of width of clearance, which is actually considerably more than even what exists here where the new stand, the subway entry is. The planters will be spaced almost five feet apart. We're only proposing them in this location. There's a subway stop here, there's subway vents here, I'm sorry, bus stop here, subway vents there. This is the only location that these planters are being proposed. Some existing photographs on the top, on the top right. This is looking from Madison Square Park toward the building. The planters will actually match these. They're a resin recycled material, lightweight, and they'll have variable plantings in them. They'll match these, they're sort of a limestone color that I think harmonizes nicely with the cladding on 205th. Some existing photos. There are a number of features around the base of the building to the north. A landmark sidewalk clock, a mailbox, other features. You can see the subway vents up on the Broadway side of the building. And then a view north, looking up from 23rd, so to show the width of the existing sidewalks. And then a rendering, unfortunately, the building has a bridge in front of it, but you get a sense of these planters, they're about three feet tall, roughly four feet in diameter at the top, and spaced four foot, eight inches apart, allowing for flow in between. And obviously, they are not anchored to the sidewalk. They can be moved and fully reversible. And I don't think they screw with the building or impact the district in any way.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, we'll take testimony. Jack Taylor?
I'm Jack Taylor of the Drive for Protect the Ladies Mile District. It would have been helpful if the applicant had included some historic photographs in his presentation. They would have shown that at no point in the history of 205th Avenue, built in 1909, has greenery of any sort been included in the very wide sidewalk funding the principal facade of the building, which also faces the seven-acre lushness of Madison Square Park. Most noticeable on this sidewalk has been the great clock, itself an individual landmark erected to coincide with the opening of the building. Competing for this space are also a subway entrance, a newsstand, telephone booth, a mailbox, and a street lamppost adorned with, guess what? A hanging planter. As for sidewalk planters, 13 of them are already installed on the east side of Fifth Avenue, directly opposite number 200's facade. Behind those 13 planters are something like 100 more of them in this intersection of Fifth Avenue, Broadway, and 23rd Street. A veritable epidemic of what Nicholas Canal, a former head of the Public Design Commission, when it was called the Art Commission, labeled, quote, "clunky, badly maintained, concrete monsters," unquote. This characterization, let it be noted, did not specifically refer to the sidewalk planters at this location, but to sidewalk planters in general. It is hard to avoid the contention that in this case, the application for approval of yet more planters is seemingly to discourage the presence of sidewalk vendors with their carts. They are legitimately licensed vendors selling food products and items like sunglasses and jewelry, and they have every right to occupy space on this wide sidewalk, especially in a designated historic district that was originally largely commercial and retail in nature, and to a great extent still is. We strongly recommend that this application for a C of A be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. HTC does not support this application as we found the planters to further confound the clutter on the stretch of Fifth Avenue. On this immediate sidewalk, there are existing planters down the block, a mailbox, a street clock, a newsstand, phone booths, subway entrance, and trash receptacles. Collectively, these items form a wall surrounding Fifth Avenue. There are currently perforations in this wall to allow pedestrians to cross the street from the people-saturated Flatiron Plaza and its subsequent food vendors. The proposed planters will essentially fill in these perforations and add to the chaos. We understand that the consultant of this proposal specializes in security, which leads HTC to believe that the beautification is not motivation behind these planters, but rather something more exclusive in nature. With heavy potted plantings and a green vista just across the street in Madison Square Park, these should be eliminated from the sidewalk. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Are there any other speakers on this item? All right. Community Board Five recommends approval. And we also received a letter from Flatiron 23rd Street Partnership, which is the bid, and they also generally support the owners in this application. All right, do you want to respond to any of the comments? Yes, just, right, because the issue of the.
Just to clarify, while there are structural barriers to the work at Illinois for a long time, some of the security issues, they're all based on the sharing and support of these. In terms of vendors, I think we're also, you know, consider others, there's a lot of other space that I'm considering. There's park location and permanent locations will continue to look, so that's really not the issue. And I'll just say, we spoke with the community board, they say memoirs, they actually joined me for an hour about this. It was really actually a very lively conversation, very interesting. And they were concerned about traffic flow and that's very safe and conditional on those issues. And it was a very productive conversation, I think, and they're very supportive of the application, I think, as well.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing. All right, comments? I, you know, I've gone to this part of the neighborhood a thousand times and it's, I don't see any issues with having the planters over here. I think that it faces the park, that in fact the greenery complements the landscaping of the park itself. The sidewalks are very wide, so I don't think it's going to hinder either circulation. But also, more importantly, I'm not sure it's going to detract from seeing the features of the building itself and the ground floor. Yes?
I personally find them kind of relics of an earlier time when everyone was, I don't know, trying to do these low-cost spruce-ups. I mean, I think that there is certainly contextual district precedent for it, and I think it's therefore appropriate. I just kind of wish they weren't there. I think that they kind of don't belong in a district that was mercantile and, and commercial in its nature. But I don't think they're inappropriate, I just don't particularly think they're good.
The only, you know, the point that you make about whether planters are appropriated in sort of a mercantile district, I mean, I understand what you're trying to say there, but I think that because this, this is in sort of one of the gritty streets, it's actually a look, a building that's very prominent on a square. And I think that, to me at least, makes this more appropriate than perhaps if we saw planters, you know, on West 18th Street or something.
Maybe it's my connection to the site. I mean, I, one of my first jobs was very close to here, and I remember it as being a real dump. And I found that, I found that kind of, oh yeah. I found that kind of nice, that it was a real kind of commercial, mercantile place and that it didn't have a gussied-up feel, but that's just nostalgia, so.
I think, yes.
I find that my visceral response to this is that they don't really detract at all from the building in front of which they are sitting. That they, I find the addition of these planters to be much less chaotic than the hordes of gawkers standing in front of Italy, who I would much prefer to get rid of. And so I can be in favor of these.
Others? Yes.
I want, I'm actually kind of neutral about this. However, I do want to say that I am aware that the, the park and the bid and the property owners around the area have spent quite a bit of time trying to create this sense of connectivity between the east side of Broadway, all the way over to Fifth. And now there's that pedestrian seating area, and they're constantly looking for ways to do that. In a way, I would say that this is just another visual link that helps knit this together. So if you look at it from, if I look at it from that perspective, it seems to make sense to me.
Okay, great. Michael?
In the matter of 205th Avenue in the Ladies Mile Historic District, an application to install sidewalk planters, I recommend approval, finding that the work will not alter, eliminate, or conceal any significant architectural features of the building through the streetscape, that the material design color of the planters will be compatible with the limestone facade and the paving of the sidewalk, and are in keeping with other planters found within the streetscape, that the planters will not be fixed to the sidewalk and therefore will be easily reversible, that the planters will be set at a distance from the building and will not obscure any significant views, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the Ladies Mile Historic District.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? So application's approved. And we're going to break for lunch a little early today, and we'll resume at 12:20. We're just ahead of time, so.
Okay. Oh, I see, so they haven't shown up yet.
Yes. Thank you.
17-4697, 1356 Broadway, the Greenwich Savings Bank, an individual landmark, Block 812, Lot 29. A neoclassical-style bank building is designed by York &amp; Sawyer and built in 1922 to '24. The application is to replace and modify awnings and signage installed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Julianne Wiesner, Kianacy Preservation Staff. 1356 Broadway is located on the northwest corner of West 36th Street, spanning the block between Broadway and Sixth Avenue. The proposal is to modify awnings installed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. The proposal is to modify awnings installed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. The existing retractable awnings at the windows were installed above the lintel, and the placement of the awning at the entrance obscures decorative features. The two vitrines flanking the entrance with light crystal display LCD screens feature primarily static digital images and were installed without a Landmarks Preservation Commission permit, replacing previously existing light boxes. Parts of the light boxes remain at these two openings. The applicants are asking the commission to legalize these two installations with the understanding that less than ten percent of the images will be moving. Additionally, please note that other signage boxes, which were installed prior to designation and are illuminated, remain at select openings at the other facades. There are no proposed changes for these existing boxes. I would now like to introduce Alan Zarkean, who will describe the proposal in more detail.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us. So I'm going to walk you through thirteen pieces of Broadway. We're trying to look at what's existing and what's proposed. This is a angle view of the Broadway side, that is the main entrance in the center. This is Sixth Avenue side. It's kind of a back entrance, it's not used very often. This is some of the historical photos of the actual building from day it was built to today, as the hardware was seventeen sixteen. Not many facade changes, just some minor tweaks, some little bit of digital effects. These are the existing conditions, which I'm going to draw a little bit further, but it's primarily on the Broadway side, which we're trying to address. The main entrance, a close-up, you can see the trines, you can see the awnings and the door and the window. A couple slides, just going to show the windows over the lintel right now. It's what we're going to try to build right now, it's above, I couldn't have to be above the lintel. So our proposal is the door is removed from, it's a regular landmark, with the span of the windows. This is it, retracted, the awnings extended out. This shows some of the, the bathroom hall, which is an advanced base now, so it's historically a van, it's a modern advanced base now, so the portrait, security, it's not really the case of, it's trying to be more, it's the hallway, have a softer touch, softer edge as pedestrians are passing by. This is the awning, the main entrance. It worked previously, I guess they installed on three, so they use the insulation walls to secure this retractable awning. Our proposal is to maintain the trines of the condition, so people can see the work. So we're going to just remove the entrance awning altogether, so it's not going to obscure any of the details. So in lieu of that, we're proposing to put back the two blocks that used to be there historically, decided, so it's going to go see that whole, the way it needs of the present. So we're just going to move on to each one of the plans. And we would need a lot of, as it's sort of, come on too fast, because I'm, so, so these are existing trines from that ninety-nine, how it looks at the door, they use it as a display case, and it was actually backlit previously, so this is the exterior view, which you, the exterior view, currently, they've replaced the images on the Sixth Avenue side, which is static printouts, but on the Broadway side, the main side, all those retract, it's coming out, the LCD screens, then, we did occasionally just to show what's happening inside, but the lights are coming out. It also doesn't maintain the LCD screen, you can't have static images, so, one of them, again, this new bathroom hall, periodically will be trailing. Moving forward, this is the back of the current existing condition of the light box. As you can see, the tenant actually left the light box intact, it's on the bottom right, you know, it's a pointer. So they're still there. That was used in backlit, where advertisement was placed there. So the tenants actually went ahead and installed this LCD screen, we will have the static image of the screen there, that was backlit. So all those pictures are still there, they're intact, out of the breakdown, that's sort of a method of how it was actually built. So there's been no modifications to that, other than support brackets, but without LCD screen. So this is how, those are historically, they're still there. Moving forward, so these are the static images that typically are presented in the quote-take periodically, just to kind of keep LCD screens fresh, but it's not like a movie or a scene or a show or anything like that, it's just events that are going on during the day. And that's it. They look pretty hard.
Okay, are there any questions? Yes, John?
Yeah, I'm not sure, not sure if I just missed this. How frequently do those images change? You said they rotate, how often?
I think every ten minutes, something will scroll through it, and then periodically, every few weeks, when he has a new event, he'll change the actual image, but for the most part, it's just something like, maybe I think the address and the name, it just scrolls, it just kind of keeps the LCD screen fresh, because it's going to burn out the screen.
Yeah.
It doesn't display the reviews or anything like that.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I just have a question. So the awnings that you have today, those are illegal, right? So you're, you're legalized, but you're changing the awning, the location of the awning?
Yes.
And, right?
The ones above the retracing, it was supposed to lower them down to the window level, to the regulation, but the one above the main entryway, we can see, consider that it is blocking the entry, of the entrance, so we just removed that in its entirety.
Okay, but, but so what, the awnings are going to be over both the windows as well as the vitrines, is that right?
One of the same, all the, all the vitrines.
Yeah, because they're all the same. Okay. You, Bernadette, are you clarifying to us? Okay, all right, just checking. Are there any speakers on this item? There are no speakers. No speakers? All right, Community Board Five recommends denial. All right, I think it has to do with the application, so they recommend denial of the application for signage from, on this building, use non-compliance with their agreement with CB Five to return with a narrower scope of work before proceeding to LPC.
Just that we were able to meet with that, with the timing, by the way, the memoirs meeting, this commission, which, but we did for the members, and letting them, exactly what we were proposing, so it was now.
Okay. If we don't have any questions for the applicant, we can close the hearing. All right, comments?
I find this filling everything. It's all, it's ridiculous. Doesn't...
Okay, I just, I, I'm going to sort of register my concern, and this has to do with sort of LD, LCD lighting. Now, we've grappled with that before, and I have to tell you, I just think that, you know, I don't have an issue with the awnings, that's fine. I don't even have issues with having vitrines. I think my concern is having this LCD lighting, even if it's static, because it has a certain visual impact, which seems very incongruent to me against a neoclassical building. So I think in a district, maybe it'd be, may be okay, but I would have to say that I think it's problematic to do it for an individual landmark. And I would prefer if they, I would recommend that actually we don't support that, the LCD screens, but they could go to more traditional forms of, you know, pictorials within these vitrines. That's my recommendation. Other commissioners?
I would agree, for the same reasons. I feel exactly the same way.
Yes.
Another issue is just maybe the depth of the box, that it should look like a deeper box, and it could be illuminated even, and I was discussing it on that.
I think illuminated is fine, it's just that, you know, the LCD screen is very different, and it's, I think it's very awkward to have that against, you know, limestone buildings. And I think, you know, in certain places, Times Square, which is very different, and you know, we've allowed for fairly sort of exuberant signage on the Nikobacher Hotel, which is an individual landmark, but I think that that's a different location, and it's, historically, that was all about signage. Just think that this portion, you know, in Herald Square, on this type of individual landmark, it's, it's just not appropriate. Yes?
Just so, so on the Grand Central Terminal Arcade, was there any LCD lighting that we approved?
That was approved, in fact, previously, and then they came and they, it was a new approval, but it modified the previous signage. So it was also in an interior space, because it was in the arcade, so I think it was slightly different, but I know that even in that case, I think some of the commissioners had concerns about it. Are we okay with that, if we ask them to change that bit? Okay, great.
You would like to change it to, what's the language?
I think we just said that, that, I think it's written.
Right here.
It's just that the LCD signage, exterior opaque borders be eliminated.
Okay, all right. In the matter of thirteen fifty-six Broadway, the Greenwich Savings Bank, which is an individual landmark, the application is to replace and modify awnings and signage installed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work has not and will not alter, eliminate, or conceal any significant architectural features of the building, that the proposed awnings, limited number and size, well-scale relationship to the masonry openings, subdued fabric color and placement of the lintels at the opening will help them remain a subordinate and harmonious presence at the base of this monumental building, that the sign plaques will be typical in terms of placement, materials, detail, and finish, and well-scale to the facade and entrance, that the overall size and amount of proposed signage, in combination with existing signage, to remain, will not overwhelm the building. However, I find that the liquid display crystal LCD signage and exterior opaque framing are prominent in placement and do not replicate or recall the character of the historic signage typically found at buildings of this type, style, and age, that the LCD signage and exterior framing have reduced the sense of depth and transparency at the windows and disrupt the perceived unity of the punch masonry wind bill, oh, masonry wind openings at the building base, that the LCD signage and exterior opaque borders be eliminated.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Thank you, Commissioners. We're moving to item eleven. It's an application for certificate of appropriateness, appropriateness of Bro Manhattan, document number eighteen seven nine one three. Says twenty East Sixty-Fourth Street, located within the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a residence built in eighteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and altered in the neo-French Renaissance style by Harry Allen Jacobs in nineteen twenty, twenty-one. The application is to replace windows.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Derek Danner and Preservation Department staff. This property is located in the Upper East Side Historic District, on the south side of E Sixty-Fourth Street, between Fifth Avenue and Madison Avenue. The applicants are proposing to replace two multi-light sealed French doors with large multi-light banlight transoms at the parlor level, and keeping the existing brick mold. The architect is here to present this application.
David Abalo for Abalo Sherman Architects, Stephen Solio, Abalo Sherman Architects. We're here to seek approval for the parlor windows, which are casement windows, and the transom above, which is fixed. It's of note that the second and third floor windows have already been approved at the staff level and match the salient details of the windows that we're proposing here today. In seeking to have the approval of these windows, we note that consistent with the second and third floor, the desire is to create a higher-performance window from both a security, thermal, and acoustic point of view, while maintaining the significant historical details within the mullion system and glazing system of the window, and including preserving the existing steel brick mold that separates the window frame from the masonry construction. And I'm going to turn this over to Stephen to walk the Commissioners through the particular details. Thank you.
So here's our context showing the Sixty-Fourth Street location, our nineteen forties tax map, and a photo of the existing condition of the building. This is our context, looking north and south on the block, showing adjacent to our neighbors. And you see the second floor, roundtop windows, rather prominently. Here's a detailed view to show the existing window. It's most likely a hopes original to the nineteen twenties renovation of the facade when the building was converted to a single-family mansion. We worked with Walter B. Melvin Architects to assess the existing condition of the building, specifically the masonry and the, this particular window, among others. Here are some general shots to show the condition of the nineteen twenties original window, its various details, which were taken into account in designing the proposed windows, which I'll show you. Here is the crux of our presentation, which is highlighting the second floor replacement right here. In our details, we show the existing versus proposed. You see an existing window, non-insulated, single, single-glazed hopes, rolled steel window, and in its stead, we propose a thermally-broken, insulated steel window, paying particular attention to the existing details, specifically the cove mountains, a slender cove profile running around the perimeter of the sash, which we've taken great lengths to incorporate into the proposed detail, going so far as to replace, to maintain the existing brick mold, which you see running around the perimeter of the existing masonry opening.
So it matches the historic material and detail?
In material, yes. The detail is essentially the same. As you can see, just from, going from an existing non-insulated unit to a higher-performance, thermally-broken unit, there are some minor variations, which we accounted for and included in our calculations, showing a maximum of a four percent diminution. This is just imagery, more or less, of the, of the type of window with which we propose. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Are there any speakers on the side? The Community Board Eight recommends approval, and Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts also recommends approval. Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, we can...
Very straightforward.
Okay, can we, we can close the hearing?
So am I.
Right, are there any concerns? So I think, yes.
I don't see any reason to replace these if they provided a condition assessment report that says they're readily restorable.
All right.
And, you know, there are many companies that can provide weatherization upgrades to windows like this. I see no reason to approve this.
All right, so others, just to sort of also set the stage, the other windows that are on this facade are being, are being replaced or have been replaced through staff-level approvals, and my understanding is that the standard is not that they have to be deteriorated to the extent that they, is that correct? Right, so the reason why this is before us is because these are special windows, so that is a reason before us, but ultimately, the plan, I think, is comprehensive in that they're changing all the windows, but the rest are being done at staff level, and these are the two that are being, are before us, because they're considered special windows. So... So I don't have an issue with this. I know that, you know, they're not deteriorated, but I think that they're essentially, yes, I understand that, but, you know, there are other original windows also on this facade that are being replaced at staff level. So I don't have an issue with it. Others?
I don't have an issue.
Yes?
I do think that it's too easy sometimes to just swap them out for modest, if any, energy performance benefit. I think that, you know, I understand, I don't think that what's proposed is inappropriate, but I think it's, I think it's, I think it is important for us as a commission to establish that holding on to original material in general is a, is a principle that we advocate, and that, I think there are lots of cases where windows do need to be replaced, but I think that we should at least try to hold on to original material when it's feasible, and these windows, from the photos and from the evidence we've been presented with, seem to be salvageable. You know, the energy, it's being done primarily for energy purposes, and I, the stuff that I've read suggests that that, that the payback is fairly, fairly nominal. I think it's appropriate, but I think we, as a, at a commission level, it might be worth thinking about that standard.
Right. I mean, I think that, I think it's, to me, it's a little more nuanced than that, which is that, that to hold on to every piece of fabric, I think that in general, you're right, the commission should think about historic fabric, and if it doesn't have to be replaced, why replace it? But I think in cases like windows and where you have, you know, I don't know the, all the technology around it, but I think the goals of, in fact, if it is for insulation and for sustainability and those goals, the idea of incorporating it into historic buildings is, I think, worth looking at, and if it can be done in a seamless way, it's also worth looking at. So I think if this allows the windows to be more insulated, that's a good thing for the building overall, and if it doesn't detract, and the fact that the other building, other windows within this facade are also being changed, so I think, taking all that into consideration, I think it's okay to replace these windows. So, I know you don't.
I disagree with you. It's far too easy to find people who can provide weatherization upgrades for windows like this, and ultimately, we are the Landmarks Preservation Commission.
I know, I understand that. Other Commissioners? Okay, are the rest of us are okay with approving this? Alright, Jean?
I don't think it's, they are very, they are special windows, and if they really can be replicated, they can be repaired in good condition and achieve the same ends. I mean, you know, if we were asking them to do, and looking at it the other way, if we're asking to do every window, it might be a very large expense, and it probably, it's going to be more expensive by some to do those ideas, so.
They'll spend more money doing this than they would restoring those, and they'd put very nice storms inside and have virtually identical energy performance.
Alright, so.
I think I'm on their side on this issue.
Okay, so the issue is that the commission feels that they cannot support this? Some of the, that's what I'm hearing. Because, but the idea is because there are other methods to weatherize these windows, which doesn't require their replacement?
I maintain the original material.
I think that I could vote for it, but I think that, as a policy matter, I think that from visual point of view, this proposal will result in virtually identical windows, but I think that there is that principle of, and the original material is valuable. I don't think in this case I would necessarily vote against it, but I think generally in my part, I'd ask the, ask the staff to raise the bar on requiring, or we should look at the rule. If you're saying that the rule says that you can replace the windows on staff level, it's been determined that they don't need to be replaced, I think this is not a energy, super energy efficient, passive house, or a Nancy Arrow house, code doesn't require it, I don't see why we should be more, the code doesn't require the replacement, I'm not sure what we should go beyond it. In this case, I think the visual, as a support of how you're saying, we as commission and staff should tighten up after.
Right, and I mean, yes, John?
I was just gonna say, for the staff-level approval, the windows do need to be shown to be deteriorated beyond repair, but, but not at the commission level.
So the upper floor windows were deteriorated beyond repair?
Right, but I, oh, okay, then I misspoke.
That's right.
I thought it wasn't. So these ones are not, the condition of these windows are, yeah?
Commissioners, the, the top floor windows, sorry, the third floor windows above these, so these windows here were deteriorated beyond reasonable repair. They were, they were in much greater decay than the parlor floor windows. The fourth-story windows were replacement windows that didn't match the historic details at all, and the fifth-story windows were replaced as well, and those are double-hung windows. You're welcome.
Okay, so I, so the staff cannot, I just want to understand this, because it wasn't clear to me. The staff can, cannot replace windows unless they're deteriorated?
Historic windows.
Historic windows. Okay, but the commission can, and so the question here is, is the commission supported, and that, I think, changes the sort of color of this application?
Yeah, for me, that, that fact does change it, because if, if the upper floor windows were allowed, because either they were not original or they were overly damaged, and this is neither overly damaged nor a replacement, I think we ought to keep it.
Right. The only thing, and I agree, and I think that, or there has to be, let's say, a really compelling reason to, to, to do that, and, you know, I would say that if these windows really have, as old windows, and again, I don't know the technology, I don't know what it takes, if these windows are not able to perform as modern windows can, I mean, I think the issues of just sustainability and energy efficiency is an important goal, and it's a goal that may have not existed in, in the eighteen hundreds, but it's a goal that we have now, or in nineteen, early nineteen hundreds. So, and I think we should think about how to incorporate them into our historic buildings. But I don't know the technology behind this, so in, if, you know, I'll defer to the architects here. If, if these historic windows can actually be weatherized and where the efficiency can be increased without replacing the windows, then I would agree then.
My understanding is that the issues with steel casement windows are as follows: conduction, convection, right? Conduction, the steel, the steel is not thermally broken, and so if it's cold on the outside, it'll be cold on the inside, and it's like having a little radiator of cold making a draft. The convection is, you know, the air that, that, you know, that goes through, that is pushing through, right? Pardon?
Sorry.
Right. So nine, the majority of the convection, the wind coming through that hits the front can be dealt with by insulating the perimeter, like where the window hits the wall. Usually in an old building like this, there's nothing in there, it's just actually empty, and you can also address it by weatherstripping these windows in a completely visually seamless way. So that leaves you with conduction, and, you know, the conduction can really be dealt with with a storm, although, but conduction usually does not create in and of itself the majority of the thermal problem. So if people are really uncomfortable, you can use a storm window. That's beautiful, relatively, you know, innocuous.
Well, why do we do this? Why don't we just, let's not take any action today, because we're not going to take any action. Why don't we not take any action? I mean, I think the applicants have heard our concerns. They'd have to make a more compelling argument to us, and they can explore other ways of making these windows more efficient without removing the material. And I don't know what the other, you know, by putting storm windows, are there other kinds of implications, but if they have compelling reasons, we can revisit this. So we're not taking any action.
Okay, then, the next item on the agenda is item twelve. It's an application for certificate of appropriateness Borough of Manhattan, docket number eighteen zero four five five. This is eight thirteen Madison Avenue, located within the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a brownstone, this is a neo-Grec style rowhouse designed by Charles Buick and built in eighteen eighty-one, eighty-two, and the application is to replace storefront infill and to install lighting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Michelle Chabrow, Maintenance Staff. The application before you is eight thirteen Madison Avenue, which is located in the corner of E sixty-eighth Street in the Upper East Side Historic District. The proposal has numerous components. Okay, so it looks like it's not advancing. Sorry, you guys can go through your handout. So if you turn to the page that's after the historic photos, I think it's the third one, and we'll have the existing condition. So this is a storefront that was installed post-designation, and so the application of the storefront portion is to remove the nonhistoric masonry infill and installation of larger glazed display windows. The second component is on the visible E sixty-eighth Street elevation, the removal of a nonhistoric door and stair, and the installation, sorry. Yep, the removal of a nonhistoric door and stair. Very good. Thank you, Derek. Let me start from the beginning. So this is a commission-approved storefront. As you can see, at the time of designation, the photo is completely different. So the proposal for the storefront is to remove E Street infill and installation of larger glazed display windows and doors. And then the second component on the E sixty-eighth Street elevation is the removal of a nonhistoric door and step, infilling those openings and installing those square display windows and doors. The third component is the removal of two doors, which is a rear elevation, dropping or two of those dropping themselves and installing doors with a railing and a rear extension, removal of three double doors in the east and east wing, and installing metal and glass in the, in March of today, and installing rail to get some terrace access. These are some other examples of buildings in Madison. These are showing the illumination at night, because the fourth component is to install lights. So the applicant would like to install light fixtures in the modern stone at the storefront, and then these are all groundstone sills throughout the rest of the building that they would be sitting on top of. So here are some details of those.
Is the commercial building all the way up?
Is, is Michelle all the way up, Joe?
Yes.
So here, just back to that elevation of what's happening at the ground floor, and then the last component is to clad an existing competition that right now just basically has a membrane on it. I don't have the best photograph of it, but they would be installing a standing, a standing seam, which is visible on other portions of the building, so let me just show you the small one that I have. Okay, I guess I'll just show you the elevation. So basically, it's just a membrane here now. It is visible, it's all the way up on the facade, and they would be installing a standing seam, which is visible on other portions of the building. So Joe Terrell of Sweeney Row is here to discuss the proposal.
Okay. So Michelle actually covered everything pretty thoroughly. Basically, Max Mara, who you probably know exists here, purchased this building about twenty-five years ago and has been steadily working on it ever since, and I think, I think that they've now gotten to a point where they really want to kind of finish up what they were thinking about previously, in that when they, when they first took it over, this scheme here was actually approved by Landmarks to replaid the entire building and make it into a modern, modern structure. Luckily, it didn't go that way. But the, the one thing that you can see here in the previous is up at the top, this, this last floor, which I think probably was added somewhere in the, in the original building. And that one was also here in front of the commission a few years ago with Rand, I think, because they had tremendous leak problem, and they thought, we're there in front for both replacing the windows and the cladding, as it turns out, was the cladding. When we, so the windows replacement never had, never got completed, and we never, we were that part of the application. So we're just going back to trying to replaid it to look not too different than it looked in this, this photo, I think it's from the forties. So, so again, the issues are, they're redoing the store completely inside. We've been here before, where we had the addition in the back already, that, that entry in bronze and glass a few years ago, and they would like to get a certain amount more visibility for their store, even though they understand where they are and that they're limited in doing that. So they're just trying to get a little bit more glass in the windows from where they were at. They would like to, because we're raising the floor height to one level inside, we're trying, we'd like to have, get rid of the, the steps, because this building is set up in such a way that the ground floor is actually called basement, and the second, first story, second story, and so on. So we're actually trying to go back to using it as a ground floor. They would like to activate these two roofs that they have as terraces, mostly for visual purposes, but also to complete the store experience of people being inside, being able to look out, and very simply just restore the roofs, put the same kind of railing that's in the front, and on the one floor where we have windows and a very hazardous waterproofing detail, we'd like to go down to that, redo the roof completely. We have, there's a couple of air conditioning units which we've already, which were illegally put there, which were already escrowed money to take out as part of this project, but have the roof, and we'll come back with a greenery proposal. And the same with the roof on top of this addition that we added, where what was probably a kitchen originally and is mostly covered with bars, we would like to just open that up and do a simple metal and glass door, so that from inside you could see out. These are other examples of windows that have been opened up all the way to the masonry on Madison. And then these are other lit buildings on Madison, which we think allude to some of what we're trying to do as well, which is just a very subtle light from one side only of the window that would just light the arc, and with very small lights in this, on the bottom part, which is nonhistoric, the lights will be recessed, act completely into the masonry, with a kind of push, spring push thing that the fixture comes up that you have to change. And up here on the sills, again, they're, they're set just on the sill, attached by a conduit, so that's how, that's how they would light. And they're attached by, this is the, the light in the sill that is in the lower sections, and... No, it's, this, it's this detail. So this is how it would sit in the upper floors. Conduit would come through here between the wood sill and the masonry sill, tie in directly to the fixture, and that would be the whole fixing part of the, so. And then the last item was the questions of cladding the upper floor. We'd like to use a metal panel that's some of similar to what it would have been, might have been copper, it might have been other metals. Right now, it's...
No, you're proposing.
Yeah, we're proposing darkish. The other one on the other side is green, as if it were a...
So you're proposing brown? You're proposing brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Which is what we think from the old photos, what we think it was.
Okay, is Diana?
Yeah, I also had a question about the lighting. One, were all of these approved by the commission, the ones that, the examples that we're showing? And also, it appears you're, you're really washing the bottom of the building with light is what's going on. It doesn't look like any of the other examples are doing that exactly. If that's, at least that's what the rendering seems to do, which is...
We've been struggling with the rendering. We're working also with our Italian partners here to know what they want.
Okay, yeah.
But a lot of this is just lighting in the window. The actual lighting is, is actual, is an upshot and is mostly highlighting the column, the deep side of the column. That's the intention.
Yeah, so what do you think it would be most similar to in your examples, to go back to your examples? The intent.
Question in the middle of the top.
I just wanted to point out that they are commission-approved, but one of them was for a new building. It has something about corolla, and another one was for a storefront, a corner style apartment building.
Thank you.
You've called the community for a report. Amazing. I, I would say that the, that this one, you know, this one is probably pretty similar, and they, they also had started to wash their upper design.
Yeah, I could see the, the upper story, they were washing. And, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's see. The speakers on this item? Yes, Elizabeth Fagan.
Hi, Elizabeth Fagan, Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. The increase in glazing at the front and rear and the addition of lighting across the building are problematic. The current masonry around the storefront windows is attractive, and the removal of this in order to create even larger windows seems unnecessary. Although the storefront is a fairly recent addition and is not historic, the masonry surrounding the windows gives it a more traditional historic appearance of punched window openings, which is better suited to Madison Avenue. In the early 20th century, many row houses on Madison were converted for commercial use with the construction of two-story storefront additions. Visually, these storefronts were distinctive from the rest of the residential building in materials and design, creating a separation between the commercial and residential uses. The introduction of lighting across all of the windows on the front and side of the building invades this residential character and seeks to turn the entire building into a showcase instead of just the storefront. Friends believes that the stately corner building is already very attractive and visible and does not need any extra illumination to bring attention to itself. At the rear, the removal of the existing windows at the lower terrace level with a new glass door and window disrupts the rhythm of the existing fenestration and calls undue attention to itself. On the East 68th Street side, the infill of the below-grade entry is appropriate, and at the roof, the proposed standing seam metal cladding will be an attractive improvement over the existing condition. Overall, Friends asked the commission to deny this proposal's plan to increase the storefront glazing, add lighting across the building, and alter the lower terrace windows. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Community Board Eight recommends approval of this application. Do we have any, do you want to respond to the comments? Okay, do we have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing. All right, comments? Yes.
Fortunately or unfortunately, I go up and down Madison to go home on the express bus. So I go from one end of Madison all the way to the end. And I have to agree that it might be too much lighting all over the building, because usually all the lighting is at the lower, two floors at the most. They have a long Madison, and it doesn't go up the side of the building to the residential. So I'm okay with the changes to the facade, but the, it's too much lighting.
Commissioners, we actually don't regulate the illumination. The actual fixtures are regulated by the commission, but the amount of light projected is not under our jurisdiction. So it's just actually the light fixtures are what we regulate.
Right, to the, to the extent that...
Well, I guess I disagree with the light fixtures on the upper side of the building.
To the extent that...
Of the second floor.
I think also this proposal's changed, but they were a recessed fixture in some locations, and it looks as though they're now just placed on top of the sill. But the, I think the concern was the amount of, of penetrations into the cast stone or the, the historic material.
Are you saying that we...
No, I understand.
Sorry.
Yeah, so go ahead.
Are you saying that we don't regulate the presence or absence of lights, period? Or we only regulate them because of the appearance of the fixture, not because of the resulting light that they might issue?
That's correct. I mean, we regulate the installation of the fixtures, because obviously that has impact on the historic building.
Right, but are we...
But the illumination that's thrown off, that's not something that we regulate. Only indirectly, I guess, if you said there could be a very small fixture that has less impact on the building...
So you're saying that if there was a magical fixture that had no physical manifestation, but that illuminated the building like a stadium, it would be totally okay to put it into any district in any location?
Yeah, we weren't, we don't have, we don't regulate the actual lighting of the buildings. That's correct.
Gosh, it seems like we've done an awful lot of regulation of lighting of buildings based on the notion of whether or not lighting per se, not levels of lighting, but lighting per se, is appropriate in a particular district. Was that all in error?
No, I mean, I think we...
I think it's an error. I think, I mean, I've been here for, I guess, a couple of years, and it really has, as far as I can recall, it's really about the fixtures. It hasn't been about the illumination levels.
Yeah.
Son of a gun.
Yeah, I don't know which...
We've reviewed...
I'm thinking of specifically, a couple of years ago, we did a, a building in Soho where we talked specifically about whether or not it was appropriate to do lighting, to light up an entire, an entire building. I think it was on Grand Street, where there was a whole block front, and they wanted to do a lot of uplighting on the building. It was a master plan for a storefront.
People look at New York Public Library and some of the other issues, other buildings, major buildings with not only lighting, you know, lighting, but also illumination of things. We had discussion of it.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I know we've never talked about levels of lighting per se, like, you know, number of lumens on a, on a particular spot, but I can't, I can't remember a time when we didn't talk about the concept of desiring lighting or not having lighting in a particular location.
It's always been, the policy is the, is the fixture, and it's never been quality of light or the presence of light. It's been about the fixture.
All right, I'll blow you down.
Right, so I think it's, and possibly, it's possible that the commission may have like talked about these issues, but probably in, in, in the resolution or in the decision, the appropriateness argument is made for the fixtures and not necessarily the lighting level.
Is it that the law does not permit one to talk about the presence or absence of light per se?
Yeah, I'm not sure of the basis of this, whether it's our policy or where it arises, but I know when I've been here, we've never actually required someone to reduce the amount of lighting on a building. I mean, it's always been the fixture that we're regulating. Yeah.
Mark has taken the position that it's just too difficult to regulate the quality of light itself and the amount of light being emitted from the fixture, but it's been the fixture itself that we've been always discussing whenever we've had that issue come up.
For instance, the Knickerbocker Hotel, I think it was mentioned earlier, if you look at it today, it's a rainbow of colors. It just keeps changing.
I'm not talking about the quality of the light. I'm talking about yes or no. Not how much, not what color, but the building that I'm thinking of, which was, I believe, on Grant Street, was a full storefront, like a three-sided thing, and I think it was a buyer blinder bell project. We talked specifically about whether or not it was appropriate in Soho to have an illuminated storefront because of the quality of the district at night. It was not one where there was a number of illuminated buildings and that we felt that it might create a kind of, a different quality of, of the experience of the streetscape at night to have an extent, one building extensively illuminated. There was no discussion of the color of the light, the quantity of the light. It was the presence or absence of lighting of a building per se. That's my recollection of it.
Well, why don't we agree to continue this discussion? And when our mark comes, we can actually have here and John sort of go back and just think about, you know, sort of the legalities, as well as, you know, Sarah, look at what we've done in the past. But, but I think what I'm hearing is that in terms of this particular application, there's a concern that the amount of illumination, not necessarily the actual intensity, but how much of the building is being lit, is of concern. So why don't we, I think there's a feeling that it should be reduced and be much more subtle. So maybe that has to do with reducing the, the fixtures and the penetrations, but that will also remove the level of illumination. Yes, Diana?
Yeah, I was going to say, I agree that the position of light fixtures draws undue attention to sections of the facade, which causes you to look at it differently than you would normally. So it's, it seems a little out of character for the district to me. And, you know, most of the examples have illuminated windows, but there's this sense you're, you're going along and the building itself is dark and the windows are illuminated. And I think that's typically the way you're going to see the storefronts in the district. So to have the peers, be coming, appear to come forward, which is what happens with the, with this positioning of the fixtures, is something that, that looks a little out of character for me for this district.
Commissioners, a suggestion perhaps, just to eliminate the Madison Avenue, not the side street?
It's not here, it's Jared's.
Oh, no, okay. I thought it was too loud. A suggestion is just to eliminate the storefronts on Madison Avenue. Those are, those, that's the non-historic material. I think the sill, the, the sills on the side elevation and maybe the upper floors are the historic material.
More peculiar. Which is, I'm just to clarify what I think I heard, which was that, which is the existing condition, which is that most of the storefronts look like the existing condition as opposed to what is being proposed. Is that correct? With regard to...
The lower levels.
The lower levels. The lower levels. Yeah, the way, the way the lighting takes place is more like the existing condition. Is that the point, is that one of the points you were making? Yeah, and the other, and the other changes they were proposing as far as the windows and so forth, I didn't have a problem with those other changes. It's just this particular issue that we're grappling with.
I, I study lighting, so I have a particular furnace for lighting, and, and I just want to throw out a, maybe a slightly different point of view, which is if you look at a two existing rendering between the existing and the proposed, from preservation point of view, the light actually is highlighting the features of the building.
Yes, it is. There's no question.
And so actually accentuates the beauty of a structure, right? I mean, I saw, I, I, and obviously granted that, you know, there are many ways to light a building, but from preservation point of view, you know, to call attention to these features that are otherwise hidden at nighttime, I always remember, you know, taking photography and, and the question was, can you see color at night? And the, the answer is yes, you can see color at night. It's not black and white. And, and the color and the lighting helps you to, to achieve that end.
I mean, buildings are lit all the time. I don't think, I don't know whether, what they're regulated by, maybe the lighting code or something, but it's not a zoning issue anything people light up their buildings. So, I mean, I don't think there's, I think, yes, it's, maybe it's too much, but in general, the concept of lighting historic buildings and revealing features is, I think I would agree with Wellington, it's not, it's, I think, a positive thing.
I was just going to say that we have, in fact, approved lighting of individual landmarks, a particular, sort of, and maybe we didn't, maybe we didn't approve the lighting, but...
But there are buildings in historic districts that have been lit as well. That happens all the time.
Absolutely. We have a long history.
There have been some very specific ones. Usually it's an individual landmark that, you know, had no...
We've had historic district buildings lit as well.
Presence, yeah.
That happens.
Absolutely.
And I think if you look at the fixtures, so...
So I'm not saying we shouldn't, I just think...
Okay, so just on the lighting issue, I think that to try and resolve it, as recommended, why don't, can we ask them to work with staff to reduce the levels? Okay.
Yes.
And the fixtures, and I think ensure that the lighting really is about not just shining the whole building, which is maybe detracting, but really picking up on some of the historic features, particularly the ground floor where you have the most elaborate features.
Jared's, Jared's distinction, if I heard it right, was, I think, a very good one. I, I think the idea of, if we're gonna, if we're gonna hang our hat on, on the fixture, then the notion of penetrating non-historic material with, with the fixture and the wiring is a clear break, and you could then restrict the lighting to the storefront box, the two-story storefront box, which happens to be fairly consistent with what else is going on on Madison. Most of the images shown were of the two-story, the two-story retail storefront being illuminated, and you'd get rid of the stuff that's on the historic sills, and, you know, there you go.
Okay, I, I, I think that's good. Are we okay with that?
Why, why is all of the other lighting being lit?
You're not allowed to ask questions. This is a closed hearing. So this is our, I'll keep with this thing. Okay. Any, anything concerns about the openings in the rear L?
I think the, I think the upper level ones are fine. I think the lower level one seems gratuitous to me. I don't, I don't, you know, there's already been a lot of this...
It's very visible, so I think...
Yes, right. And they can achieve their goals without doing it. They can just lower the center window and make a door and...
I would agree. I think that the, the lower level, they should have, again, just extend the openings, but keep the, the widths as is and not try and consolidate that.
District, a brownstone neo-grec style row house designed by Charles Buick and built in 1881-82. Application is to replace storefront infill and install lighting. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features which contribute to the special architectural and historical character of the Upper East Side Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications finding that no original or historic fabric remains at the base of the building at the corner storefront, and that the removal of masonry to create larger display windows will not eliminate any significant historic fabric. That the scale of the proposed display windows are in keeping with the large glazed openings of other storefronts within the district. That the proposed changes to the infill will maintain the horizontal division between the first and second... between the first and second floor, which reflects the two-story scale and rhythm of the streetscape. That the proposed entrance and stairs on E 68th Street are not historic, and therefore their removal and the installation of a single light window and masonary infill finished to match the surroundings in brownstone will help to maintain the rhythm along the E 68th Street ground floor masonary openings. That dropping the sills of three windows at the rear facade at the third floor to access terrace will only be minimally perceptible from the street. And that the proposed standing seam cladding on the existing rooftop addition will blend with the material palette of the building, and the new roof will ensure watertightness and prevent future deterioration to the rooftop structure. However, I find that the removal of windows and masonary at the second floor of the rear extension on E 68th Street and the installation of a large metal window and door creates an excessively large opening that is not in keeping with the building's historic fenestration. And that this opening will be, will be highly visible through the metal railing from E 68th Street. And that the exterior lighting scheme calls for an excessive number of fixtures and penetrations into window sills, which will cause damage to the facade. I therefore recommend that the existing openings at the rear L at the second floor be retained, that the exterior lighting scheme be simplified with a number of fixtures and their penetrations into the masonary reduced in consultation with staff.
And that, I think their proposal was to lengthen the openings rather than retain them? Instead of consolidating all the openings? That was the suggestion?
The rear L openings can be lengthened, but not consolidated.
And also that the focus of the lighting will be on the...
Lower floors.
Lower floors.
So, right, the reduction in fixtures will take place on the top floors and can be lower.
Right.
Okay, second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, so we're moving on to the present, the public meeting aspect of the agenda. So the first item is 252 West 71st Street, docket number 177750. It's located within the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension. This is a Renaissance Revival style row house designed by Tom and Wilson and built in 1892. The application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions and alter the fenestration. This was read into the record on July 12, 2016, is being presented today for the first time.
So here we go. All right. Okay. Commissioners, the proposal is for rooftop and rear additions at 252 West 71st Street. This is the building in question. It's right next to another building, which is next to an open hall, which is actually the public park. And the architect, Tom Vale, is going to take you through this presentation.
I make a motion to reopen.
So moved. Good afternoon. Thank you for reviewing this application for certificate of appropriateness. The property we're talking about, 252 West 71st versus this property, a region historic district. There are two, four, six, eight buildings that were built around the same 1892 period. They have repeating windows, big scoops. And here is a park space. This view here looks at the, into that park. And on this block, there have been before the, over the past several rooftop additions done, for example, here. Number one here. Number one here. Here's a tax map photo of the property, stoop, bay window, brick. Interesting Spanish tile bracket or overhang at the top. It's on two buildings, done by the same architect. And this elevational drawing shows the park, the neighbor of the property that we're talking about today, and then the other similar buildings. And here we see, again, rooftop addition, rooftop addition, rooftop addition, rooftop addition. Is this being rooftop addition here? Our proposal for the owners of the property, it's a single-family house, they would like to do a rooftop addition, which is shown here behind. Let's go to the next question. Yeah, here's an enlargement of the existing condition. An enlargement of the front facade. This partial elevation taken 10 or 15 feet back from the Mansard bracketed tiled, no Mansard, excuse me, Spanish tile, shows that we've set the addition back. And we have a, behind this architectural detail, there is a terrace that's down approximately at this level here. And you approach, propose new doors to the rooftop addition. So, that's the, the components of this project are a proposed rooftop addition, new, three new windows on the front facade here. And these three windows we're proposing to match the original design from 1892, and they're indicated in the tax photo. The next slide, also part of this proposal, is in the rear. So here are photos of the rear of the building now. We have a brick rear extension. We have about 15 years ago, they built this greenhouse. They have this metal balcony and a brick back facade. And you can notice on the top are mock-up construction, which is in orange. More photos, and we can see that the neighbor to the west earlier built an extension on a rooftop or an addition on top of the rear extension. Today, as it is, neighbor, rear extension with additions. Our property, as it is today, with our extension and our back wall. Here is the back of the rooftop addition we're proposing in brick, matched the original brick. We have a roughly eight by six or 48 square foot room with a terrace at the original height. So this is set back addition. And then we have railings. At the greenhouse that exists, the owners have had difficulty maintaining the glass skylight roof. It leaks, and it's not properly built. So they requested a terrace, which is now going to come out. There's two windows with a beautiful stained glass detail and some brick detailing around the opening. We wish to maintain that brick detailing, maintain the stained glass, or enlarge those windows to two doors. They'll now come out on terrace. So they have a solid roof over that area. And then an air-cooled stair down to the garden.
Can you talk to us about the visibility of the rooftop addition?
This section, which shows the new addition. This is the construction model. Does it have a name, is it project architecture?
So we put the mark up in February of this year. Kevin and Greg came to the side. We look together, the markup from the street. And as you can see, it's slightly, very slightly visible from this area.
So it's, you can, that portion is above the, it's behind this building over here, right? It's the other one, okay.
This is a view, this is a view from the street.
Right. But the enlarged, there's an intervening building, correct?
Exactly, yeah.
That's, sorry, there's an intervening building.
Actually, that's correct. It's over the adjacent building.
Yeah, it's over the adjacent building.
It's slightly visible from the side view already.
Right. Through the narrow park, over the building that's the intervening building, right? Okay. Got it. Okay.
This mock-up addition, please stop, let's go back one more. So here is an axon schematic with an existing rear version addition. Here is our massing and setback.
Okay, no, I think we've understood.
Okay.
So commissioners understand, right? What we're thinking, okay. All right, are there any questions? Yes, Diana?
Yeah. Just the, the rear. Is there anything, are you covering original, the original upper floor? It's, or is that, is the back of the, of the building original? Yeah.
This, this is original.
What about up above that?
This is proposed in setback, so we respect the...
Going, going to the, going to the existing. What I'm talking about is normally we try to preserve the uppermost floor. So what I'm asking is, is the building beyond the additions, is that original? The back wall.
That's straight, yeah. No. Okay, great.
We're asking whether it's original fabric that you're covering. Thank you, Wellington.
Okay, it's the original wall.
I thought so, but, you know, it's, it's still, whatever.
This is the existing parapet wall, existing, existing parapet wall. And red is the section of the building today. And what's crosshatched is what's...
I understand the construction. I was just trying to understand whether the wall was actually original that you're covering. So, on the upper story.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
And then we left the wall to the interior.
Okay. Okay, all right. Are there any speakers on this item? Any speakers? All right, Community Board seven recommends approval. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing. All right, comments? I think the massing is, is fine. And even though it's slightly visible over an intervening building, it's just very modest and it sort of blends within the side wall. Okay. All right. John?
In the matter of docket number 17-7750, 252 West 71st Street in the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension, the application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions and alter the fenestration. I note the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension. I further note the building was designed to appear as a pair with 254 within a row of five nonidentical pairs. I recommend approval noting that the, because of the, their setback locations, the proposed rooftop additions will not be visible over the building's front facade and will be only minimally visible from limited vantage points on West 71st Street and West End Avenue to the west and within the rear portion of the public park to the west on this block. That the proposed addition of the, at the main roof will not encroach upon or diminish the special architectural character of the building's historic sloped tiled roof, front roof parapet or alter its historic paired relationship with its sister building to the west. That the one-story height of the proposed main roof addition will be in keeping with that of the adjacent rooftop addition at the building to the west. That the sloped configuration of the proposed stair bulkhead at the main roof addition is in keeping with that of utilitarian bulkheads often found added to residential building roofs. That the proposed rooftop additions will not destroy the building's historic corbelled brick rear facade roof cornice. That the setback location of the proposed rooftop addition at the existing rear extension will not diminish the historic visual relationship of the rear extension with that at the adjacent building in this row or significantly alter the perception of the building's rear facade plane. That the transparent character of the proposed picket-style railings at the new additions will further minimize their impacts within the block. That the configurations of the fenestration at the proposed rooftop additions, including punched openings and multi-part door assemblies, will harmonize with the fenestration at the existing facade and at surrounding facades and rooftop additions in this row. That the proposed brick, stucco, and copper materials of the rooftop additions are in keeping with those of the existing and surrounding rear facades and rear additions in this block and district. And the proposed beige color of the stucco will be in keeping with the building palette. That the proposed construction of both of the setback occupiable rooftop additions together with the stair bulkhead at the roof of the new main roof addition and the deck at the ground floor at the rear facade will not overwhelm the building in terms of massing, will maintain the scale and character of the building as an individual row house and will blend unobtrusively with the scale and character of the surrounding buildings in the row and the block. And that therefore, the proposed work will maintain the special architectural and historic character of the building, the pair, the row, and the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item on the public meeting agenda is an application for certificate of appropriateness in Borough of Brooklyn, docket number 177428. This is 815 Prospect Place, located within the Crown Heights North Historic District 2. This is a colonial revival style semi-attached house designed by Axel S. Hedman and built circa 1907. The application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions, alter window openings, and perform excavation. This was last presented on June 14, 2016.
Do you know how things go?
An open.
Okay. All right. The proposal is Eight Fifteen Prospect Place at the edge of the Crown Heights North Historic District Two, near North End Avenue, right here. When they mentioned the district, we saw the proposal and upwardly viewed towards key, at which time we looked at a rooftop and rear additions which enveloped the building. We had some concerns about the amount and extent of the proposed enlargements, change to the building to receive rowhouse typology and character due to the extent of enlargement, as well as to the designs and configurations, thank you, of the additions, and we had concerns about the extent of the proposed excavation under the rear.
Thank you. Corey.
So I'll show you what, this is the views, and that's the soft floor. This is what you saw before, looking into the block. This floor is already helping addition, big window at the top floor. Now, the architect, here's the previous, the architect, no, no, excuse me, this is existing, the architect has changed the proposal to reduce the fourth floor and set back the top floor, the top addition, cladded and standing seam, to redesign the rear addition, which include more masonry, shallow balconies, to relocate the first spirescape to the setback side facade, reduce the footprint of the proposed excavation as a rear yard. And, and the architect here, we have further questions or can we see other parts of this proposal? Again, this was before. Here's the original outline of the building. This was the previous proposal with the fourth floor rooftop to rear addition. And this is the current proposal, existing on the roof of the building, with an extension of the existing rear extension and a setback extension, and a setback rooftop addition cladded seams. And this is the element of the excavation of the rear yard, proposed to. Do we have further questions to the architect or to the super changes? Please also to the commission, we are going to, first would it, the, 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 the office. May I check this?
So, um, there's, there's been a lot of, please mark it.
Jerry, it's at the top.
Okay. So, just sort of grab your memory, this is how our lot, this is the.
And the Commissioners, you may remember that this is a case where it's, I think it's a one or two-family home that's been converted to a multiple dwelling, correct? Okay. Just, if you can focus on what the changes are.
Sure. Yeah, I think Catherine kind of pointed out, it's best almost created from the plan of the trouble. So, this is showing the, the top of the building. We were proposing a rooftop extension that went, I'm going to go back, but that is indicating that, we've cut it back to size to essentially penthouse, which in our field, we finally are actually changing the designation of the building from what was previously proposed to four-story, to proposed three-story plus penthouse. So it is a significant change.
And the red dashed line, is that the?
The red dashed line represents the extent of the previous proposal.
Okay. I see. Got it.
We've also reduced, I know that occupancy is not really in your purview, but we have reduced the occupancy, just as a point of information, from five family, four. So, our design of the roof, we've actually taken pains to not only reduce the size, but also the visibility from the street. So if you just walk around, when you're on this side of the building, you don't see anything, it's a tiny bit of equipment that you can see. As you walk around, you don't see any of the addition at all. And then, in comparison to the previous version, at, at this vantage point, our, our rooftop extension is not visible at all. Has to start moving more toward the left than it does start to become visible. But here again, as a comparison to the previous version, and going one more, this is the worst case scenario of visibility, and that is the comparison to the previous version.
Yes, Michael?
Did that, did that? Right, I think that, and then there's the, the three drawings at the back, which are the.
Sure, that show the redesign at the rear.
At the rear, where it's, I can't see the numbers, I can't tell.
Yeah.
I think these drawings are not numbered. Yeah, right, this, this was the previous.
This was the previous version. There were some comments made about, as you turn the corner, look back at the building, that there's too much contrast to a flat facade. That was kind of a design idea, but we have scaled that back to something that is more conventional, the bird turns the corner, and you get more standard, closer to standard size, hoping to see much smaller, sort of Juliet style.
Michael?
Can I ask a question about, about your front steps and the elevator, the little chairlift?
Yeah. Is it possible to put that chairlift on the back stair? On the back?
That one right there, you're looking at? It is only accessing the first floor apartment, right?
Yes. The, the reason I got some of the front, and that's a great suggestion, the reason the reason it's in front has to do with a objection, which I think is supported by the code, that we provide access to the man's building.
But it's only serving one unit?
Exactly. It would also be our argument, but the objection that we received is specifically the idea that the.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions? All right. We can close the hearing. All right, comments? All right, I know that when I saw it last time, I had a lot of concerns about the scale of the enlargement, and, and we had some discussions about the fact that, how do we respond to issues when it's about use, which is the conversion of this building to a multiple dwelling? And obviously, that's not necessarily in our purview to comment on, but I think we all recognize that this is going to now be multiple units. But I, I felt I had, I had voiced this concern, particularly from the street and along the side alley, that it just was overwhelming, and it really, you could read very easily from the street that what was a smaller building had suddenly taken on a very huge enlargement. So I think that by cutting back that top floor and making it a penthouse and setting it back, it really has, at least from the street, allowed us to still read the building as is. So I think, I think that's a very good move. And in terms of the rear itself, which obviously where it extends fairly deep into the lot, it's a deep lot to begin with, and I think within the donut, there's quite a lot of variation, including a lot of deep buildings. So I think the depth seems fine, and because it's not to the full height, I think that's better as well. And the change of material to something that's more sort of utilitarian, other rear yard elevations also, I think, is the right way to go. So I could support this. Other Commissioners? Are we okay with this? Okay. John, did you, you read? Diana?
Sorry, I'm, okay, let me make sure I've got a hold of it here. The yellow one, thank you, thank you, thank you. In the matter of Eight Fifteen Borough of Brooklyn, Eight Fifteen Prospect Place, seventeen seven four twenty-eight, Crown Heights North Historic District Number Two. Application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions, alter window openings, and perform excavation. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Crown Heights Historic District Extension Two. Staff, I, excuse me, I further note that the historic district's boundaries cut through the center of this block. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed rooftop and rear additions will be minimally visible obliquely over and beyond the building's visible side facade. That the metal standing seam cladding of the proposed rooftop addition will be in keeping with that of utilitarian rooftop additions at buildings of this type, and will not call undue attention away from the building's significant architectural features. That the green space at the center of the block in this district has been compromised by the presence of tenement and apartment buildings and other rear yard additions, and therefore, the depth of the proposed addition, which will be comparable to those of these other buildings and rear additions, will not significantly diminish the open character of the rear yards in this block and this district. That the three-story height of the proposed rear addition will be in keeping with those of the existing building and select, selected other additions in this block. That the setback design of the rooftop addition and the stepped and setback design of the rear addition will maintain the plane of the existing addition's side facade, as well as visual references to the building's and addition's historic rear facades. That the masonry materials, punched openings, and fenestration pattern of the visible side facade of the proposed rear addition are in keeping with those features of rear additions at other buildings in this row. That the masonry materials of the rear facades of the proposed rear addition are in keeping with those of the existing and surrounding building facades and rear additions in this block and district. That the design of the proposed rear addition, including its shallowly projecting balconies, will be in keeping with those terrace balconies found traditionally at rear additions at rowhouses. That together, these features of the proposed rooftop and rear additions will maintain the historic hierarchical relationship of the building's facades, as well as the historic scale and character of the building as a semi-detached rowhouse. That the limited area of the proposed approximate five-foot excavation of the portion of the rear yard behind the proposed rear addition will be in keeping with the sizes of rear area waves found traditionally at buildings of this type, and will not substantially alter the uniform grade of the open space within the block and the harmonious relationship of the building's rear yard with those at the adjacent buildings in this row. Excuse me. That the proposed insulation of the lift and related railings adjacent to the decorative area fence and the masonry stoop check cheek wall will maintain the significant historic features at the site. That the insulation of the proposed lift at this location will provide the required barrier-free access in the least intrusive manner. That the fold-up design of the proposed lift will minimize its presence at the streetscape while it rests, and that therefore, the proposed work will maintain the special architectural and historic character of the building, the row, and the Crown Heights North Historic District Extension Two.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners. The last item of the day is an application for a certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Brooklyn, docket number seventeen five two one two. This is Thirty-nine South Elliot Place, located within the Fort Greene Historic District. This is a vacant lot, and the application is to construct a new building. This was last presented at the public hearing of May twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen.
So, applications for Thirty-nine South Elliot Place, it's located on the east side of the street between Cal and Lafayette Avenue, in the Fort Greene District. A proposal for a new building is vacant lot, as last presented at the Commission at the public hearing in meeting of May twenty-fourth, as pictured here, on the side of the page. The Commissioners express concerns about materials, including limestone cladding, as well as the design proportions of the front facade. The Commissioner, there was a lack of information about the details in the presentation, in particular elements of the roof. There was also general consensus of support going massing for the rear facade. The Commissioners requested that the applicant restudy materials and design of the front facade, as well provide additional details to the proposed work, in particular clarifying how many separate. The applicant is modified the design of the front facade, as seen on the right of the page. It now features brick, cast stone, metal cornice, and multi-light basement windows. Rooftop elements have been modified. A bulkhead, railing, and mechanical equipment are proposed, and the applicant has stated that they will not need to raise the neighboring chimney at Thirty-seven South Elliot, and they won't have a chimney proposed at their new building. And the applicant is here to further discuss the proposal.
Okay, well, so it's, again, the same, we're back, to go for the pages, this is all the former location and the area that we are in, Fort Greene Section Brooklyn. And the first important page, the front page, is this place. Where we show a modified facade, the key elements being base, the middle, and top. We've continued the base and worked together with another thirty-five on the same block. And we've continued working actually with a symbol open, which is something that we have been discussing all along, maintaining the symbol open all the way through, similar to the city, symbol opens in the rear, and clarifying roof, but the corner is a railing according to Thirty-to-Goyette Road and the street, and turn the bulkhead into other directions, so now the top of the bulkhead is at sixteen feet away from the neighboring chimney, so it's not disturbing the chimney at all. So, yeah. The Commissioners, they saw this, there were major concerns about the line at the front of the front, and there were some questions about what was going on in the roof. As you may remember, it was a stone face, it was stone padding, and there was concerns and recommendations to look at other buildings in the district, and also to look at the Edna Seaplane House and Rennish Village. So they've changed the materials, they've also changed the window configurations, concerns about the type of window, if there would be tilt and turn before, they're now doing multi-light basements. They picked up on a masonry base to kind of reflect some of the configurations of buildings on the streetscape, the streetscape primarily brick and groundstone. And there was also a lot of, some confusion about what was going on on the roof, there was representations of a railing versus a parapet that has been kind of corrected in the sections where you can see that they're doing a railing in the front, and that there's not going to be a parapet mid-roof anymore. They've really worked, talked to them about this design of the side facade, about the rear.
and those portions of the building, to think that this part may be certain that they have. You've been posted to the last two pages, A two, May twenty-three, that has a precedence, um, as we've been working on it together, and making sure that the votes picked and selected in order to include on some of the...
Okay, I'm just looking at A fourteen, and so you've changed the angle of the, you've moved the bulkhead, right? That's what you said?
The bulkhead has been flipped and...
Flipped. Okay, and so, on A six, I'm just looking at the elevation. Am I seeing, is that the skylight that I'm looking at, that square?
That's the side, right.
Okay, but it's, it's tilting back.
It's tilting back.
Okay.
You can take a look at the section, um, sheet. Well, A twelve shows you the angle from the street, and that's the person that we see happen before.
Okay.
On A thirteen, you can see how the block works in the opposite direction, at a sixty foot distance.
Okay. Yes, Diana?
Two, just two questions. One, what is the material on the rear facade?
Um, it's always been the same. We picked up on the stucco, which is the same, if you look at the back sheet, if you look at sheet twenty-three, you will see the stucco building its doors, and you use that on the side of the roof.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if, what it was, thank you. And the door in the, the front is, is a wooden door, or no?
Uh, right now, we're working with a metal door.
Okay.
Which is, um, similar to the windows.
Yeah, I, I see.
Some of the metalwork on the block.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was metal or wood. Thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions? Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We can close the hearing. Right, comments? Well, I think that, yes, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that I think that, you know, we were struggling with the facade last time. I think it's an improvement. I think that, at least I know I commented that because this is a very narrow building compared to the others, the others all have a row, I don't think, two windows or one, or three windows, but because this is narrow and it's one-off, having a single window and opening seem, at least I think it's okay, but I think that their current proposal, which is to treat those window openings in a more nuanced manner, and having multi-light windows is the right way to go, and I think the brick facade works much better as well. So, I know that the staff had some concerns about the fact that because there's, um, there hasn't been a markup, but I think just to make sure that the visibility of the rooftop bulkheads are as minimal as possible.
We have a brick. The brick has been repaired with the exception of order that we've selected.
Thanks.
So that's, are we okay with? Okay.
Thanks.
I think it's an improvement over what was submitted previously, and it's a modern-looking building, but that's okay. It's probably a good thing in this case, and it's, uh, using some materials to pick up from the, the rest of the block colors.
Yes.
I think that it's an improvement. I would ask them, though, to work with staff on, on the details, because I think looking at twenty-one, what you've got is a very traditional-ish kind of cornice, but a, and a very traditional-ish kind of entry piece, but then the window, you know, the windows are clearly not traditional in proportion, it's kind of more horizontal in orientation. So I would say that either they should traditional it up a little bit, or they should modern it up a little bit. It's kind of sitting on the fence in a way that I think will look like someone took a, a single bay of a traditional building and kind of like squeezed it like this little bit. It will just look a little odd. So I think that if, if you kind of either push it one way or the other, either, you know, you can make it more traditional by having a center pier maybe, or just messing with the proportions of the windows, or making it more modern with the detailing of the windows and the cornice, I don't know, something that would, you know, there's a million precedents that we've looked at here, uh, that would be suitable to, to consider, but I think that the staff can work on that with details.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Yes, Kim?
So both of the windows and the rooftop bulkhead detail.
Windows, bulkhead, okay. In the matter of thirty-nine, South Elliot Place, Fort Greene Historic District, application, a vacant lot. Application is to construct a new building. I note that the Fort Greene Historic District developed into a residential district in the late nineteenth century, with most of the buildings being three- or four-story row houses built of brownstone or brick. I also note that thirty-nine South Elliott Street is set near the middle of the eastern side of the street, all of which, except for the southern end, is within the historic district. That the western side of the street is not included in the historic district, that the portion of South Elliott Street within the historic district primarily includes brick and brownstone-clad row houses and other townhouses with three, with three frame houses, including two immediately adjacent to the project site, as well as a brick and brownstone-clad tenement and an apartment building with limestone at the ground floor and brick cladding above. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the, that constructing a new building on the empty lot with its facade closely aligning with the facade of adjoining buildings will help return a more uniform street wall, supporting this, a significant characteristic of this block in the historic district. That the building will be consistent with townhouses typically found throughout the historic district in terms of height and overall massing, and will be well scaled to this narrow lot. That the proposed materials and finishes of the front facade will be well related to the palette of materials and finishes historically used throughout the historic district and found at neighboring buildings, thereby helping to support a harmonious streetscape. That the placement and size of masonry openings and multi-light casement windows at the front facade will be in keeping with the range of placement, size of openings, and variety of building types at neighboring buildings, thereby helping the building to relate harmonious, harmoniously within its context. That the composition of cast stone brickwork at the upper floors and metal cornice will utilize the vocabulary of base shaft and termination capital common to buildings in this historic district. That the simple design and typical placement, scale, and materials of the ground floor entrance surround and light fixture area way fencing, paving, and built planting beds will be compatible with the design of the building and consistent with the character with which such typically found at the neighboring properties throughout the historic district. That the side and rear facade will be simply designed clad in stucco and typical, in terms of window and door sizes and solid and void ratios, helping the facades to remain in keeping with the character of secondary facades throughout the historic district. That the building will not extend to the rear lot line or substantially eliminate the presence of a rear yard. That the rear facade will not be visible from the public thoroughfare. That the proposed excavation will be designed and built in compliance with the Department of Buildings Regulations under the supervision of a licensed professional engineer to protect the building and the adjacent building. However, I find that the detailed drawings for the new building have not been provided, and that the visibility of the rooftop elements has not been adequately studied. Therefore, I recommend that the applicant provide detailed drawings of the building for review and, to evaluate the details and articulation, and that the visibility of the rooftop elements be further studied.
Will be, will be, um, reviewed with staff?
Well, will be further reviewed with staff, and efforts made to reduce the visibility of the rooftop elements which overwhelm with staff.
And they will work with staff regarding the details of the windows and the proportions of the windows?
And the applicant will work with staff regarding the details and proportions of the windows.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Applications approved. All right, um, just before we leave today for the remaining part of the summer, I just wanted to announce that, uh, this will be the last review session, that you will see Carly Bond, um, one of our superstars, and, uh, she's making her mark at the Smithsonian in DC, and we are going to miss her like crazy. She has really dedicated herself over the last close to ten years, has been just a superb landmark preservationist, but also a deputy director and a great mentor to her team. She has had a unique position with this...